This meeting will be broadcast live to the Local Access Channel and on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. And once again, as always, we thank PAC for their support and what they do for our community by broadcasting all these meetings. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and of those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by open meeting law. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone stand, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin our agenda, I will say our honored guests will have a moment to celebrate them during our superintendent's report. Next on our agenda is public comment. Is there anyone with a public comment this evening?
I'll make a comment, since you're looking in my direction.
You may.
So, first of all, for the folks in the booth, we're getting some echo from the microphones up here, so maybe if you could turn down the speakers just a tad. We're bordering on feedback, so, thank you. This is my first public meeting since town meeting, so as you might imagine, I have a lot of pent-up commentary. No, I just, I wanted to just take a moment, and as you all did a couple of weeks ago in the meeting that I missed, thank all of the appropriate parties involved in both the budgeting process that we went through over the course of the last several months, and the lead-up to, and execution of the override votes that occurred both at town meeting and at the ballot. Many of you may recall that I was the lone remaining skeptic when it came to an override on this committee. I became a believer over the course of the process, and I recall saying to the superintendent with about three or four days left to go, like, "I think it's about a 50/50. I think we got a legit shot at this." And was thoroughly surprised, to a certain degree, but also incredibly proud of what we did in our school community, but also what we did in our town. And I hope that this is a gigantic leap for the brand of Lunenburg, to be a town that prioritizes our children and education. And I know that there are a lot of people in Lunenburg that don't agree with that, but we need to win, and we need to continue to work to make sure that that vision continues to become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then moving right along, the Chair's report. Once again, a heartfelt thank you and congratulations to our retirees. Your service to the children and the families of Lunenburg is greatly appreciated, and we'll talk more about that later. Congratulations also are due to the Lunenburg High School class of 2024. The ceremony on Saturday was a reflection of you. Thank you to the high school administrators and staff for their preparation, and to Mother Nature for the glorious day, and we wish the graduates and all that is good as they move forward. Representative Scarsdale has scheduled a regional meeting with DESI to discuss school budget issues. Mr. Jeffries, Mr. Waters, Ms. Gilman, Dr. Gilman, oops, sorry, oh no, that's the other one. Sorry, I'm missing out my people. Mrs. Gilman, Ms. Lemieux, Dr. Burnham, and our school committee chair are invited. This meeting is scheduled for either July 12th or July 19th at either 9:00 or 1:00. She's looking for availability. She asked, would someone be available? I did reply that at that point in time, I would no longer be the Chair, so I was not going to speak for anyone else, but my thought is to reply that we will have somebody there at that meeting, regardless of who it may be. Would that be all right, if I do that? Okay. Let's see. She's also requesting a brief overview of our school district with salient points that would be helpful to DESI. I figure we can figure that out, and we will develop that list further down in the agenda where we have topics for the delegation. That sort of all mashes together, though that focus is a little different. As our fiscal year draws to a close, I feel it is important for the public to know that the superintendent and her team, despite the lack of a business manager, have made sound fiscal decisions, and our financial consultants tell us that we will close out the fiscal year strongly. We are awaiting their final statements, as they are awaiting confirmation through the town. Difficulty with Munis, the town's financial software, has caused the fiscal year closeout to be more challenging than normal, but we are looking forward to a financial report at our June 26th meeting. And that's what I have. So we will move on to review and approve minutes, regular session, March 6th and March 27th. Did anyone have any questions about any of those minutes?
We still have listed as business manager, HR Director Michael Cassidy on the top of the minutes, but other than that...
That's just the old letterhead.
Okay, yeah, we'll fix that.
I had sent in my recommendation, recommended changes.
Okay. And were they reflected?
I don't know if they were updated yet. I haven't had a chance to look at them again.
Checking with Liz, they haven't been dropped into the folder yet, but we do have that correction that will be made.
Okay. So then, do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 6th, 2024, and the March 27th, 2024 minutes with the revisions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All righty. And then, I think I would, if it would be all right, could we get to your report before we get to this, because we have these people waiting, and I don't want to make them wait anymore. So, out of order, I'm going to ask for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. My only report this evening is to honor our retirees this year. We had, we have several, and I will start with Christine Basset, who has had 32 years with the district. Sarah Sabatini, 31 years with the district. Tim Normandin, also 31 years with the district. Erin Anne Burrows, 30 years. Mary Whitaker, 24 years. And Martha Sullivan, 23 years with the district. They will certainly be missed. We each year ask our retirees if they were willing to share their plans for their future in their retirement, and Christine Basset tells us that after retirement, she's hoping to spend lots of time with her son Connor, Dominique, and her new grandson Nico, and do some traveling with her husband Chris, and that would be traveling that doesn't have to happen during school vacation weeks, which is a big deal. She's looking forward to more trips to Georgia to visit their son Travis, and she's also looking forward to spending some time caring for her mother. She also can't wait to have extra time to spend outside walking, reading by the pool, and maybe start gardening. She says, "Oh, those poor plants." I have no doubt she'll learn quickly and do very well by those plants. And she says that she's not sure, but maybe her house will be a little cleaner and she might cook more often. Sarah Sabatini shared with us that she hates to sound boring, but her plans for retirement are not to work until she gets bored. I think that's a fantastic plan that I could endorse. She says she's going to continue to take care of her gardens, read until she falls asleep, and bake for people that she loves, and she hopes to travel as much as possible. She and her husband are planning a trip to Portugal and Spain next year for their 40th anniversary. So congratulations on that account as well. Erin Anne Burrows tells us that she has no plans as of yet, but she's looking forward to renting a house at the beach in September. And Martha Sullivan tells us that she plans on spending some more time with her family, especially her granddaughters and her siblings who live out of state, and she too is looking forward to doing a lot of traveling. So here with us this evening, we have Mrs. Sabatini and Ms. Erin Anne Burrows, and I would like for Mr. Santri to come up, and I would like to invite each of them up to receive a bouquet and a certificate, just a small token of our appreciation for the many years of excellent service you've provided to the children of Lunenburg. If either of you, if either of you would like to make a few comments?
We're good.
Okay. And just one other reminder, the last day of school is one week from today. It will be a half-day, so for those, just for clarification, if you look at the calendar, you're going to see that the 11th was the half-day. That's because that was the original last day of school. But we did have one snow day, so it got pushed out. So the 11th is a full day, but the 12th is the half-day. And we hope everybody has a wonderful, safe, enjoyable summer, and we're looking forward to seeing everybody come back in late August.
Sounds good. Okay, now we're going to go back to what we skipped. Review and approve warrants and line item transfers. I just want to start with the warrant total from May 20th to May 30th was $244,162.63. If anyone has any questions regarding that, please let us know. And we do have line item transfers.
We do. And I'll go over this quickly, but we do have Paul Livingston with us this evening. He's one of our consultants from TMS, him and our finances, while we are without a director. You have in your packet this evening, request to transfer a total of $76,336 from several lines, including the psychologist salaries lines, as well as the fire safety and furniture repair lines, to the dues and fees line, the regular transportation expenses, computer purchase and lease, and the water charges as well. Just a quick explanation, school psychologist staff could not be hired. We had those positions vacant for some period of time, partly filled during the year, but vacant. So we used a contracted service to provide those services, as we were not able to hire someone on staff. And we do have the money available in the fire safety and furniture repair account, and these transfers will reconcile accounts for those dues and fees, regular transportation, computers and lease, and the water. That said, there are many more line item transfers that we will still need to make, and that's in large part due to what the Chair had referenced earlier, with the challenges with Munis, trying to get accurate accounting, turnover in staff up at Town Hall. It's been quite a process, I will say, frustrating at times, because it has been such a challenge. But I'll invite Paul Livingston to elaborate a little bit more on what he sees as our current overall budget status, but we are anticipating that we'll be bringing additional line item transfers to reconcile account lines in the next few meetings. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Livingston.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me well enough?
I think we need you a little louder.
A little louder, all right. Let's see if I can be a little louder. Is that better?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Okay, let me, I'll turn up volume. I don't know if that's going to help or what, but hopefully you can hear me. As you've all noticed, and you know that it's been an unusual year for Lunenburg, you know, when you start off without a town accountant full-time, and yet someone new comes into a whole new program, as we did about four months ago or so, three months ago, everything really got quite behind, and the idea of doing postings and all the typical accounting functions that happen in any organization get slowed down. So what we've been trying to do is recapture all of that, and we're making, making good progress, but there's bumps along the road. Certainly, there was a Munis upgrade that was done during that time when folks were out. That's an upgrade to the financial software, and that throws a few monkey ventures into the work that's trying to be done, and even to the point that today we found out that some FY '23 and even FY '22 POs that were, had been opened that should have been closed are still in there and still actually affecting an FY '24 balance. So that's something that we need to get a handle on, and Zethio, who is the new town accountant, Ayayala at the Town Hall is doing a super job, but you know, he's new into the finding all the different places and how Lunenburg puts it all together, so it's taking a little bit of time. We'll get, we'll get there. I'm not worried. We may need a little bit more time than usual, but you know, I think we'll get there, and we will certainly, as Kate said, be bringing in other changes that will need to be done by the committee on June 26th. This not only affects the general appropriation budget, the regular town budget, but it also affects revolving accounts and also the grants that we receive, because some of the grant monies have not been drawn down, and we're trying to find out what needs to be drawn down. We've now, I think, believe we have taken all the money from the state that we possibly can, that we will apply to the budget, and that will also cause some fluctuations, because the money was not there and it was not, wasn't paying salaries or various things like that. So the other part that I'd just like to share with you very quickly is, you know, myself having, and you know, many of you certainly don't know me, but I was a business manager for a period of time, and then a superintendent for over 20 years, and I've been working now in various capacities since my retirement and going into lots of different school districts. And one thing that TMS tries to bring in to any community that we work in is the idea of best practice, and I think there's some opportunities here to consider the possibility of things that would make the work easier, more efficient, smoother, particularly, you know, just on a regular basis, but also really on a time when, like what you've just been through. There are things that I've seen happen in most other communities, such as closing POs and being able to reclass expenditures, and items like that, that right now seem to be done all at Town Hall, and that's part of why the process for this year has been slowed down, that everything is approved, like, so tonight's transfers, they've been approved by you. There will need to be a request, obviously, to Town Hall to make those. That will then trigger an email and, you know, reason up to Town Hall. They will make it, they will approve it, then there's another email that comes back. There's just such duplication of effort on both sides, that I think it would be easier for the town as they readjust with a new town accountant, and certainly for ourselves as Lunenburg adjusts to a new person coming into the role. It would make it much simpler. And quite honestly, the biggest piece is the salary piece. The school salaries are the largest portion of the town budget, and currently, all of that is done at Town Hall, and it's very difficult to keep track of some of those changes that take place and just be sending the payroll up and not have some of the direct contact and capacity to make some of those changes that are very typical. And ultimately, you know, by law, the school committee controls that budget, and I think you want to think about how you can make that more close at hand within your school district office. So those are just a few of the best practices. There's others we can talk about, and that will, you know, evolve over time, that may fit into the way, the culture of the way Lunenburg wants to do it, or may not, but at least sharing them, talking about them, thinking about them. We hope, TMS hopes that we can bring you along in the best way possible going in for the new business manager coming in, but certainly for the closing right now, and then hopefully setting a better foundation for the long term. We're happy to be here. We're getting there. It's been, it's been a ride, you know, Walt Disney has, I don't know if they still have, they used to have a ride called Mr. Toad's Wild Ride, and I think some days I'm on that, but we'll get it done. And I have to say that my partner that is with me, Marlene DeLeo, she also is a former superintendent, and the staff in Lunenburg has just been very helpful. You know, we're basically on site one day a week, but when we call in or do emails, we get immediate responses, and it's making it much easier. So we're happy to be doing the work and look forward to continuing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Livingston. Is there anyone on the committee that has a question?
Are we gonna talk about best practices more? So if I have questions about that, I should save that till we...
A later date. I think that that's one of the things that we'll consider for our summer workshop.
Okay. Hold that for now.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just we, just to offer a comment when it comes to best practices, I'm reasonably aware of all the issues that you talked about, Dr. Livingston, and the services that we rely upon at Town Hall, which, by the way, when I, when I mention those services, I always mention that those per pupil expenditures that we talk about, that the state holds us accountable for, burdens in those costs. So while sometimes those numbers are not reflected in our direct budget, the state looks at the expenditures when it comes to a share of the town finance director, the town accounts and payroll, HR. We pay for all of those services that Town Hall renders, at least in so much as the state views how we go about supporting our students, and calculating local aid and whatnot. And unfortunately, the way our government is set up in Lunenburg, we really do not have what the charter refers to as superintendency over those functions, like we do, for example, what it stipulates when it comes to our facilities. But there is a movement in town, with very good reason, I might add, to look at consolidation of services and functions in Lunenburg, to include the school department, and that would include things like plowing our parking lots and facilities maintenance and those kinds of things. And I think that that is a topic that we're going to have to work through as a committee over the course of the next several months with the town, and I think that it would be, I think it's reasonable to entertain those conversations, but I don't think we're in a position right now where it will be tenable for us to draw back some of the financial services that we are having difficulty with right now, and put under our own control and umbrella. So we've got to figure out best practices when it comes to working with Town Hall, and defining who is responsible for what, and how to achieve accountability when it comes to these matters, and how to, and transparency with respect to that as well, because I think we, we lack transparency when we run into some of these issues. So, you know, I would like that to all be part of the recommendations and discussions that perhaps we workshop later on in the summer.
Okay.
Very well said.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, I thank you very much, Dr. Livingston, for joining us this evening. Have a great evening.
I do indeed wish I could stay, but I do have to leave. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. Thank you for all your help.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the transfers totaling, I don't see a total on my transfer sheet.
$76,336.
There you go, as proposed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have our student representatives' report.
Thank you. The last day of school is coming up on June 12th, which is a half-day for all schools. For the primary school, there was a second grade concert last night. For Turkey Hill Elementary School, field day was today, and there's a third and fourth grade music concert on June 7th. For Lunenburg Middle School, there's a fairy tale dance coming up on June 7th. Students in Mrs. LeBlanc's 8th grade civics class took civics MCAS, and grade 8 graduation is on Wednesday, June 12th at 8:20 a.m. For Lunenburg High School, we said goodbye to our seniors last week. Graduation went great last Saturday, June 1st. Finals start tomorrow and go till Tuesday. That is all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Moving on, we have new business, FY '25 school handbooks.
So this evening, you have draft copies of handbooks for each of the schools, for the middle school and the high school. You have a parent handbook, and you also have a student handbook. The changes have been highlighted, so that you can see exactly what was changed. The principles are here, if you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions about any of these handbooks?
I don't have any questions. I just had a comment. I did appreciate the consistency among all the handbooks when there was an addition, like, there was a health addition, that everyone was doing it, and we're keeping that consistency. So I appreciate that.
I thank you very much for putting them all together. I looked through them all, and everything looked good, and we appreciate that. Do I have a motion to approve the handbooks for next year?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you very much on that account. Aye. Thank you very much on that account. And now we have the parent teacher conference pilot.
You may remember that when I brought the school calendar for 2024, '25 to you in the wintertime, it indicated that the dates for parent teacher conferences were not included on that version of the calendar because the principals were working through their school advisory councils and with their school building leadership teams to take an opportunity to reimagine what a parent teacher conference could or should look like at each school level, to be more appropriate for the grade level and meeting the needs of both the teachers and the parents through that experience. So, you have a few proposed pilots for how those parent teacher conferences would look next year. Again, the principals are here and I would invite them to come up and just say a brief word about the ways in which this will look different next year during this pilot year.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight, having us tonight. Like Dr. Burnham said, we did talk about reimagining parent teacher conferences, what we looked at at the primary school, and you'll hear a very similar model for Turkey Hill, was moving the parent teacher conferences to January. It really happens to coincide with our mid-year assessments and the termination. We felt, in talking with my staff and the school advisory council, we really stressed that, you know, we'll have data, really solid data. We can talk about that mid-year data where students come in at the beginning of the year and they have all that growth till January. And then we can really look at what we need to do moving forward and have those discussions with parents to have students continue to improve. Whereas before, in the fall, we had the kids for maybe four or six weeks. And we're just beginning, especially if you're looking at kindergarten students, we're looking at, you know, they're just learning how to do school for the most part. We're really not looking at where they are academ- we don't have that, a lot of academic data like we do in January. It does take them some time to adjust to the routines and then they really start to show, you know, that academic growth around January. So, we felt that it was a better time to have that data and have those meetings with parents and have those discussions. It does change things for us a little bit, whereas in the beginning or historically, we've not given grades in the first quarter. It's always been the parent teacher conferences. We would flip-flop that. They would still, they'll have grades in the first quarter and then the parent teacher conferences with all that information. And that data is presented to parents. We'll take the place of those grades. And then third and fourth quarter will be the same. There'll be the regular standards-based report cards. Really feel like that'll be beneficial. I think, I think doing it this way will lend itself to what we've talked about as a district leadership team, to where we envision parent teacher conferences eventually getting to. Really having those data, deep dive data discussions with parents and bringing those things up. Any concerns we have up or strategies we're gonna put in place to help the kids make it through the rest of the year. So...
And I think for Turkey Hill, we do a report card every quarter. So, for us, it would be, we'd have the iReady data as well as the report card presented to parents before we come in. So, then we can really talk about the child's strengths and needs, areas for growth needed, and be able to give examples to parents of this is how you can help your child at home. So, with that, having the data in front of us, being able to really describe the child versus at the beginning of the year, you don't have a full understanding and children's development changes throughout the year. So, having it in January after we've been able to get our iReady data as well as the report cards, to have informed decisions with parents.
Hi, Tim Santry, principal, Lunenburg Middle High School. We had some lively debate about parent teacher conferences, not only in our school advisory council meetings, during our department head meetings. And actually, we brought forth to our full faculty meeting that we had these discussions. We had several, several options, but we could not come to a consensus on any of them. The one thing I feel both the middle and the high school came together and said is that we should continue to give parents the opportunity to meet via Zoom and in person. So, that was a passionate line that went through all of our ideas. So, that's what we brought forward, is that we will have an afternoon that parents will be able to contact teachers via Zoom and then the evening ones, they will be live in person. So, our idea is to make parent teacher conferences more accessible to maybe working parents that could only take a lunch break and they can't get out and come in person. So, that's what we have for you for next year. Along with the dates, those will happen. I hope we have the opportunity to continue with these conversations and come forth possibly with another idea for parent teacher conferences.
Okay. Any questions about the conferences for anyone? Mrs. Brzezinski?
Would Zoom be an option still for the primary in Turkey Hill as well, or are you envisioning in-person ones only?
Yeah, yes. Zoom is still an option. It, like Mr. Santry said, it's really convenient for some parents that they take, they take their Zoom meeting on lunch, their lunch break. But in-person is also, you know, available. So, that's not gonna change. I mean, we've done that for the past few years. And, you know, we started it with that thing that happened a couple of years ago.
We're not talking about that anymore.
I know. Thank you. But yeah, it's been, it's been really successful. It's kind of like when we have our IEP meetings too, we offer that to parents if they can't come in through Zoom. And we, it's pretty much a 50-50 split for the parent teacher conferences. But that would be available to the parents at the primary.
And we would continue at Turkey Hill this year. We did our afternoons via Zoom and our evenings in person. So, we would continue with that at Turkey Hill as well.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea to continue with the Zoom option. As a parent who works far away from the schools, it definitely helped a lot to have that Zoom option. I would be interested in to see what you guys are gonna do with collecting data after, asking teachers how it went, asking the parents how it went, and also looking at which parents were not able to attend either the Zoom or in-person, trying to get feedback and to try to keep increasing the participation of the parent teacher conferences.
And I had made this broad assumption, but I will make sure for anybody who's listening, if I have a first grader who's struggling a bit, I would be able to talk to their teacher before January.
Yes. I remind my teaching staff at the beginning of the, of your year that, you know, parents and they themselves can schedule meetings with parents anytime that a student is struggling. You don't have to wait for parent teacher conferences. I think that's, I think that's a big misconception that a lot of people may have. Anytime, I know my staff will reach out to the families with students that are struggling. But I also wanna let parents know that if you feel like you're, have concerns with what your students, how your student is progressing, please absolutely reach out and schedule a meeting. So, yes, absolutely.
Well, that's what I figured, but I thought I would ask. Yes.
So, I think this is a good idea, especially, I mean, I know I talked to Carl about this before. My only issue is parents not getting to know their teachers, their child's teacher, until January because if for some reason they can't make open house, or if they're sick and they miss that night, that's kind of the only chance to meet their student's teacher and see the classroom and the environment they're gonna be in. So, I would have loved it if we could do two parent teacher conferences, but I know there's definite contractual issues there. So, I think it's a good idea. I'm curious how it works out, but my one concern would just be for some parents, that's gonna be the first time they're meeting their student's teacher is in January.
Mr. Beardmore?
Go ahead.
Well, again, like I said, I think if we communicate out to the families, please feel free to schedule a meeting with your child's teacher at any point in time that you feel is necessary, including that I'm going to meet my child's teacher before January type of a meeting. We have to provide those meetings. So, I think that's just one way to do that. I completely understand your concern with that. You know, our open houses, at least in my building, are well attended. But yes, there are some parents that just don't make it. And just like Mr. Layton had said, same thing with parent teacher conferences. They just don't make it. If they can't make it on those scheduled days, we are, actually have teachers follow up and schedule another meeting or try to reschedule another meeting. But I can go back and look at the data on that too. And we can definitely collect data on this. We're going to have to, just to see, you know, where, where we can take, where we can take those meetings in, in the scope of reimagining what a parent teacher conference is, right? I mean, eventually, from my point of view, I mean, I thought about this, you know, maybe my kids are, maybe my students are a little bit too young to attend the meetings, but maybe that's something we can do down the road and look at and see if that would really be beneficial. Have to look around and see what other districts do with that. But that's, that's really where we wanna go. So...
Yeah, I've never had a problem scheduling. The teachers in this district are fantastic as far as if you reach out and say, I wanna talk. They're available immediately. So...
So, I just wanted to clarify for people who do not have the benefit of the documents that we do at home, the substantial change in the calendar with respect to parent teacher conferences is at the primary and elementary schools. And the middle, high school effectively remains the same in late October. So, just for everybody who's not able to keep score with the benefit of a visual aid, that's, that's what we're talking about here. And I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Santry, that's not any change to what we've done in the past from a timing of parent teacher conferences, right?
No changes. One of the things that we spoke about was having a springtime conference for teachers and parents who are in semester two, haven't had an opportunity to meet their teacher. I'm hoping that we continue with those conversations, like I said, and hopefully we bring back something for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, this is an action item. So, do I have a motion to approve these changes and, not changes, to parent teacher conferences?
Motion to approve the change in date for parent teacher conferences for the primary and the elementary school from fall to January.
Just a question for clarification. Are we reapproving the calendar?
Later in the agenda.
Later on in the meeting.
Okay. It's a different thing.
Oh, business.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we will, we will update the calendar.
Okay. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right then. Okay. Thank you very much. Now we have unaffiliated salary schedule.
So, there are certain staff that fall into this category where they are not on individual contracts, but they're also not part of a bargaining group. And the staff that we're talking about largely are the extended day program staff. Typically, what we do is bring in a proposal for increases over three fiscal years. Given that there's still some uncertainty about, you know, budget constraints or maybe not, and also given that we are still currently engaged in negotiations with more than one employee group, I've opted to bring forward just a recommendation for one year. That would be next school year. And what you see represented in the two charts, you've got the current year and a proposed next year. And those increases are monetarily not significant, but it does represent a 2.5% increase over the current year. As an example, one of the salaries goes from $15.30 to $15.68. So, we're not talking about large jumps in salary here, but the, the change does represent a 2.5.
Mr. Beardmore?
Are these changes budgeted in the existing lines or are these accounted for in the salary reserve?
So, largely the staff involved on, on this schedule fall into that self-sustained program where it's coming from a revolving account. So, the staff largely are extended day.
Yeah.
So, they're paid out of the revolving account for the extended day program. So, we can support that. It won't have an impact on, on the budget. There's really, other than that, there might be one other person. We have a Coda, which is an OT that is not licensed to the level of an OT, but they can work under an OT, an occupational therapist. So, she's represented here as well. Obviously, that's not being paid out of the extended day revolving account. That would be paid out of the budget. But again, it's not, it's not a significant change or impact to what was budgeted.
So, I, stipulating that we're talking about very small actual dollars relative to the budget, whatever change here, again, nominal dollars, we're gonna get to a point here in the not-too-distant future where that salary reserve account is going to be discussed, you know, as we start, hopefully, knock on wood, approving collective bargaining agreements. We're not pulling from a salary reserve account.
No. The vast majority, like I said, there's, like that one position that's not covered, paid from a revolving account. So, the vast majority of these folks are not carried and represented in the salary lines of the FY25 budget.
Okay.
Mr. Layton?
With increases to the salaries listed, would this require in either the near future an increase in the fees collected for extended day?
My understanding, based on what we continue to try to assess as the current status of our revolving accounts, which has been a bit of a challenge, I believe we are at the point that Town Hall has processed revenues for these revolving accounts through the end of March. They're starting to process April. So, it's a little bit behind. But we believe that we should be able to support these small increases through, through the revolving account with no added increase to the fees that parents are paying.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
There's only, does this chart encompass all the steps? There's only four steps?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have an approximate cost to us total?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not. But it's minimal.
Minimal.
Because we don't have a lot of staff in terms of number of bodies. And they're, they're getting like largely less than a dollar increase.
Okay.
So, there's not a big impact there.
Roughly, though?
I'd have to do some math. I'll get back to your public comment at the end of the meeting.
Okay. No, I think this is good. I mean, yeah.
As I'm looking at this right now, there isn't a single line that I'm seeing that is more than a dollar an hour.
Yep, even at the top.
Yeah.
Step.
I think the closest we're at is about 88 cents.
Yep.
So, do we need to?
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll modifications for the unaffiliated salary schedule.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we have the hiring, screening, appointment. So, I received this morning a, an email from the new... So, I received this morning a- an email from the new select board chair. And he requested that we find a representative. Let me back up for people that weren't watching. Last evening, Ms. Lemieux, the town manager, said that she would be resigning effective August 4th. So therefore, we have to find a new town manager. And according to the charter, there needs to be on that screening committee one school committee member. So, is there anyone amongst us that would take an interest in being on the screening committee for the town manager?
I would absolutely be interested.
I thought you might.
I was gonna say, I'll do it if you can't.
I don't want to shock anyone.
I'm not getting in between these guys.
I would support Peter for that role as well.
Well, then we need a motion.
Motion that we appoint Peter Beardmore to be on the town manager hiring. What is it called?
Screening committee.
Screening committee for the town of Lunenburg.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I thought that might go swimmingly. All right.
Fun.
Okay, next we have payroll modification.
Yes, so I actually attended a meeting this morning that was called by the town manager for all of the department heads. There is going to be a modification to town payroll. She did send an email communication to the chair and myself. And she writes to update us that the town intends to make a change in its payroll procedures in July. Currently, the town pays employees in advance of some of their work. For example, the pay period of July 21st through August 3rd would be submitted on July 24th. And based on what is anticipated, each employee will work basically their regular hours or use of benefited time if they had a planned personal day. As a result, when employees receive their paycheck on Thursday, August 1st, it would include pay for the days they have not yet worked. And overtime for a portion of the payroll period would not be submitted until the following payroll. So the town intends to change the timing of the payment such that employees will be paid after the pay period closes. Using the same example, instead of submitting payroll on July 24th for the July 21st through August 3rd pay period, payroll would be submitted on August 5th for the pay period. And then the pay would actually be received by the employee on August 9th. This allows the town to pay all overtime for that pay period with that payroll. She acknowledges that the change will affect all town and school employees and will therefore, she'll be notifying all of the respective bargaining units and the non-union employees of this change. But they do intend to implement a change in July. Again, for the time being, a temporary solution to make sure that they can pay out overtime in a more timely way. There's a temporary move where we will be submitting overtime pay up to Town Hall every Monday morning.
What date in July?
More information, more detail about that will be forthcoming. She's coordinating that communication. She's going to be communicating with the different union representatives and so on and so forth. So when I have more details about the timing of all of it, I will certainly pass that along.
Will this result in a skip paycheck? There's going to be a gap?
Yes.
Do- okay, I'm really concerned about that.
Yep, but she's aware. And I know that they're looking at ways that they can minimize that impact.
Okay. I'm just concerned for our employees that they're going to be- and we're giving them very little notice.
Yes.
Because if it's July, if it's early July, we are giving people very little notice. They're going to have a very rough- is it going to be a week?
There are different models that they've discussed doing in order to minimize the impact. So I know that they are aware and they're sensitive to that. So I anticipate that information regarding that impact will also be forthcoming.
Is there anything we can do to mitigate the impact to our employees specifically? I'm just-
I don't see how, honestly.
Okay.
Mr. Beardmore?
This is directly related to my earlier comment about our lack of superintendency over issues that directly relate to our employees. I am as concerned as my colleague, if not more, about this. I would like to know specifically what the impact is as soon as possible to include an email or a special meeting on this topic. Furthermore, I would like to know exactly what the costs associated with other potential mitigation measures that the town could have taken to deal with this overtime issue. In my view, cut a special check and tell me what the cost is associated with that. And give our employees more of a heads up in terms of a missed paycheck. Even if that missed paycheck is a week, we just looked at-
People making $15.
People making $15 an hour.
$15.84 an hour, and now we're saying you're going to have to go without a paycheck.
So in my view, this is just outrageous. And I would like an explanation from the town's payroll, finance leadership, and town manager in person to explain this to us as soon as possible.
Okay, Mr. Layton?
Yeah, I would agree. This is very frustrating. I would also like to know what the plan is for notification to of our staff.
So as I said, she's communicating to the union leadership for all of the different unions in town. And then immediately afterwards, there would be the full explanation of how this is going to go. But she indicated today that she's looking for this communication to be relatively imminent. If it's not out by the end of this week, it would be early next week.
Do we have any stipulation in our collective bargaining agreements that- is this feasible with respect to the language in our agreements?
I could look.
I think- I think in the-
They automatically renew even if they've expired, so.
I believe that there's a reference in the LEA contract relative to the pay period. I don't believe it's expressly stipulated in some of our other smaller bargaining units' contracts about the pay period. But that, again, is why she's going to be reaching out to the different unions.
I'd also like to stipulate, our unions do not report in any way, shape, or form to the town manager. They work for- their employees work for us, not the town manager. I don't think that there's an action that we can take on this, but for the record, Pete Beardmore does not consent.
Is there anything we can do? I'm very concerned about people who are making- who are living paycheck to paycheck. I mean, like Peter said, we just approved 2.5% raises for people making $15.84 an hour. And now with very little notice, we're saying you're going to have to go a week without a paycheck. And that does not sit right with me. I'm really upset about that. I'm very upset about this. And I don't- I don't know what we can do. It's not like we can float the money. I mean, there's- is there anything we can do?
Well, I think- I think maybe we just need to wait a couple of days and see what the plan is to mitigate the impact for all the employees that will be affected by this. And then- and then see what that circumstance actually would look like.
Okay. Does this have to take place in July? Can we- does it have to be, you know, four or five weeks from now? Or can this be stretched out longer?
Well, I think that that maybe goes back to Mr. Beardmore's request to have them present to answer questions like that.
I mean, there are clearly potential other mitigation. The issue here is we are not paying overtime and compliance. But that, my understanding, my very limited understanding of this, is that is the issue. And that affects our personnel as well as town personnel that are eligible for overtime. So that is an issue that we have a shared responsibility to mitigate. It seems to me that the decision-making has not involved us in any way, shape, or form. It ought to, even if it's not prescribed by the charter or our traditional ways of doing business in Lunenburg. And at the very minimum, the school committee is- and our employees for that matter, are, in my opinion, owed a very timely explanation in terms of what other potential mitigation measures have been explored and what are the costs associated with them. I don't think that this is something that we just consent to and say, "Well, it's really unfortunate, but that's the town manager's decision."
We're responsible for these employees.
Yeah.
And it's really tough being told, "Sorry, we don't have- we're going to have to change how we pay them." And I feel responsible for the employees. It's our job to make sure they get paid. And do you know why it was structured like this originally?
I don't know why it was structured like this originally, but it's my understanding that this has been practiced for many years.
And the issue is that overtime needs to be in the same pay period as-
It needs to be paid out within a certain window of time following the work.
Okay. I think maybe a joint meeting, but I'm not sure what it's- I don't know. I don't see any solution to this.
I don't see a solution to this either. I will say that something similar to this happened to me twice during my teaching time, where I was- and actually, once simultaneously in Lunenburg, because Steve and I both missed a paycheck. I'm not dreaming, yeah, they're with me. Steve and I both missed a paycheck. And we had to go hit a home equity loan, which fortunately we had. So I- I do feel bad about this. The explanation that I was given at the time was that because of the way the calendar creeps forward-
Yeah. If you're on a 26-week pay cycle, that-
Yeah, it ends up being off-kilter.
It's frequent that that happens every few years. But you can predict that.
Every few years, you get pulled back.
You tell people about it so that they can plan.
But you tell people. Once I was told with plenty of time, and the time it hit both districts, we were not told in plenty of time, I don't believe.
But you had home equity to draw- I mean, my-
I know, but not everybody does.
Home equity is not something people have as much anymore to rely on.
So, and it was probably 20 years ago, I don't know. But- but I'm not- I'm quite sensitive to this. Though, I don't know what we can do about it, but we can have the town manager come and we can ask.
Thank you.
You know, that's all we can do.
People are in real trouble. Can they reach out to you and we can- I don't know what. Like, I just, I don't want someone-
Missing a mortgage payment.
When you are living paycheck to paycheck, you are one disaster away from falling beneath the surface. And I do not want this to be the reason some of our- any of our employees fall beneath the surface and are struggling harder than they should. So I don't know what we would do, but can we encourage people to reach out if they're-
Well, let's see what the mitigation is.
As I said, let's see what the plan is. Because she may have accounted for the impact in how she plans to execute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Next, we have a discussion on LHS activity fees.
So it's actually a little bit more than just the LHS activity fees. I figured I'd give you a summary of all of it.
It said action, but we don't have any action on payroll modification.
No, there's no action on that. There's nothing I can- we can't act about it.
Complaining is an action.
Alrighty, so this is just an overview because when I had brought forward for discussion at a previous meeting the notion of potential revenue sources and did the committee want to consider making adjustments, increasing any fees, et cetera, this was one of the fees. And then, you know, I became aware that there was a lot of chatter and concern about the fees and what are they used for, et cetera. So all students at the high school pay a $55 annual student activity fee. The fee funds guest speakers or presenters for student assemblies. It pays advisor stipends, and that includes the two class advisors for each class. Other things like mock trial and membership fees for the kids to be able to compete. The costs for the high school science Olympiad events. There's a small portion that's used toward graduation and homecoming supplies. And upon occasion, they might look to the activity fee to provide some assistance with field trip bus fees if collections are short or there are students who can't pay that bus-related cost for the field trip. All of the other buildings, it is not that every student pays a fee. But we do have activities at all of the other buildings. So just a quick summary here. As an example, at the middle high school, at the middle school, there's a $43 per club fee. And we have ski club, and there are about 50 participants there. Science Olympiad at the middle school as well, and there are about 45 students who participate there. Student government, six students, drama club, 15, chess club, four. And it's only the participants who take advantage of these clubs that pay the fee. These fees cover supplies, registration fees, in some cases, transportation, like for the ski club. Some of the costs for dances, the school's done movie nights. So again-
What is dog show?
Oh, that was just a kind of like a talent show. It was just an event that the staff and the students decided that they were going to do one year. In a moment, I will have Mr. Santri explain what that was.
Were there- were there dogs? Like?
Yes, dogs come out and they throw frisbees. They do tricks and the kids watch it.
Okay, when is that? Because I-
Laura wants to go.
It's June 10th at 1:00.
Is it really?
Yes.
We'll be there.
Can I come?
At least a meeting.
No, I'm staring at these activities. I'm staring at these activities and I'm like, what on earth is dog show?
Well, if you're free, you can come and see it yourself.
The valley wants to before. It's very popular.
Okay.
Student government.
I was trying to figure out what kind of typo it was, but no, it's dog show.
Yeah, oftentimes, it's the student government that makes the decisions about the different activities and the events that they're going to do and so on and so forth. Same is true even at the high school, the student council. They do different spirit things throughout the year and the funds support those. So I know that the concern prior was every student pays the fee, but not every student gets the benefit. But every student does get some benefit. It's not just solely connected to clubs that students may not participate in. It really gets to the culture of the building and the different spirit types of activities that they do all year long. Turkey Hill Elementary School, there's a $25 fee to participate. They run after-school activities in the winter. This winter, we had 166 participants. And in the spring, there were 197 participants. And the fees for Turkey Hill pay for the stipends for the teachers who step up to volunteer to run some of these activities that typically run for about a five-week window of time, as well as any materials that might be needed to run the activities. You've got things like a variety show, board games, dodgeball, drama clubs, so on and so forth. Additionally, there's Girls on the Run. That is not a school-based activity. That is a Girls on the Run organization-based activity where the students have to pay the fee to Girls on the Run to participate. But we do pay a stipend to an advisor for that activity. And lastly, at the primary school, again, it's a $25 fee to participate. This year, there was a five-week window through March in- This year, there was a five-week window through March and April where these activities ran, and we had 131 participants. And again, the fees pay for stipends and materials for these activities. If I'm not mistaken, some of these, if not all of these activities, were run this past year by parent volunteers that came in to run the activities.
It was about 50/50 this year. Last year, we had more parent volunteers.
So there's that family engagement piece again, too. So again, I just wanted to be able to provide some general overview information about the activity fees, what they're used for, et cetera. But there are an awful lot of things at the high school level that are funded through the activity fee. It's not just club advisors, and if you don't participate in a club, you get no benefit from it. But again, the principals are here. If you have any additional questions.
Anyone have a question? Mr. Beardmore?
So I've stated before my general resistance to fees of any kind in a public education setting, and I'm obviously very well-schooled in our budget limitations and, you know, the need to balance programming and additional revenue sources. And none of this is what I like, but I guess, you know, I understand it, most of it, to a certain extent, particularly the, you know, the optional programming that exists in the primary school, Turkey Hill, and the middle school. And my kids have taken advantage of many, many of these things. And the costs associated with them are really nominal. You pay as you go. They're not a $250 athletic fee. They're not these camps and outside-type activities that are really exorbitant when you get into programs that are run outside of our schools. I think my hang-up here is the high school program. And the problem, there are a number of problems with it. The first in my mind is that it's not optional. And there's an expectation that everybody pays it. And I understand the logic that everybody benefits from it. But everybody benefits from English class, and we're not asking them to pay for English class. And so that, I just have a really hard time rationalizing that in my head, that there's no optionality for this in any way, shape, or form. Effectively, we are charging a tuition to go to Lunenburg schools. We're charging $55 in the high school, and it's not optional. And I just, I'm, I don't, I can't rationalize that in my head. And I understand that there's a longstanding practice here that predates everybody on this stage and everybody in the audience probably, with the exception of myself and Liz when we were students. And we paid dues to our classes in those days. I don't know if that's still a thing, but, you know, that's an additional out-of-pocket expense.
Dues are on top?
I believe so. Dues are on top, right?
Yeah, so I mean, so that's an additional expense.
Class dues, that's...
Are those not optional as well?
Those are not optional, I don't believe. Must have changed.
So I think that, you know, I... If this is going to exist, there has to be some mechanism to democratize it somehow, right? And I don't know exactly what that is. I haven't, I've never really thought through, like, how do you deal with something when you've kind of backed into it the way that we have as individuals? But I think that this is something that really, we've got to figure out how to democratize and turn into something that is substantially more transparent than it currently is. And again, I don't have the answer on that, but I'm not comfortable with this as it is presented.
What happens if a student doesn't pay the $55 student activity fee?
So let me just say that those who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, the fee is waived. They have senior obligation. They have to pay whatever they have not paid for fees before graduation.
Okay, so we are essentially, it is a mandatory fee, and if you don't pay, you don't get to graduate.
Correct. So if we don't want to have a mandatory fee, then the board would have to vote not to have the mandatory fee, and then we would have to include all of this cost into the budget next year.
I would rather...
And we're talking about, you know, the equivalent of probably a paraprofessional or two.
Yeah, it's not something, I think...
It's not a rash decision.
I don't think we should do it this next coming year because we already have a pretty solid budget. And I think it would be very cruel to make you do another budget.
You really don't want to.
But, I mean, I have to wonder if we charged a slightly less fee per activity, if we would make more. Because I know a lot of students...
The problem is that the stipends for the activities, the advisors, the clubs, and so on, are part of the contract with the teachers' union.
We still have to pay those.
We would still have to pay those.
Which is why I'm thinking maybe we discuss this...
As part of the budget for FY '26?
Prior to starting the 2026 budget and pilot it for a year and see how it goes. Because I'm wondering if we charge per activity. A lot of the students do more than one activity. And it just seems like families aren't able to say, "I'm sorry, I can't do an after-school activity. We can't swing at this, you know, swing it right now." There's no way for parents to say that. And yeah, there's the free and reduced lunch. There are people who are right on the margins, and they're not eligible for that. But also $55, and if you got, you know, two or three kids in the high school, it's $55 a year. I mean, that's, we're asking a lot. But I don't, I don't think we should mess with the budget for next year by doing anything right now. I think this should be a discussion prior to the 2026 budget, and we build in the loss of this with more specific numbers about exactly how much we've been...
So I would like to request a couple of things. I tend to agree with Laura in terms of how we would approach the '26 budget. But I think that if we put our heads together or asked Mr. Santri and the student government when they come back in the fall or something along those lines to brainstorm this a little bit and think about ways that we could potentially make this more transparent and democratic amongst the people who are paying the fees, then I would feel more comfortable with it in FY '25. And I don't think that that would necessarily have a negative budgetary effect in FY '25.
If we drop the fee in FY '25?
No, no, no. I'm saying we maintain the fee, but we find a way so that the people who are paying it have a say in how the money is spent, where it's directed. It's transparent. It's basically open book. The perception here is that we're paying 55, and I know that, I know that, let me say this, saying that I know that this is not an accurate characterization. But the perception here is that this is money that's going into an administrative slush fund.
Yeah, couldn't be further from that.
But without the benefit of those who are paying having a say in terms of where the dollars are going and visibility of that, that is, that is a reasonable conclusion for those who are not read into this to make. And I think that this is not something that the school committee, in my memory, has considered. It hasn't been discussed. And it was brought to our attention by parents who said, "Can you take a look at this thing?" And I think that we have an obligation to say, "All right, can we take a look at this thing?" It's not just a matter of, "Well, if we don't do it, then we can't have it, and it's really bad." There's a middle ground here that we can come to.
Is each, are there individual revolving funds for each school? Or is there one central revolving?
Each school has their own.
Each school has their own. Okay.
Brian?
Yes, I agreed with Mr. Beardmore's earlier comments about the fees in regards to people who can't afford them. And I agreed with Dr. Burnham's comment about the free and reduced lunch and free and reduced fees. I think that's a good counter to the people who can't afford the fees. I also agree that there should be a good detailed explanation, detailed workup of where the fees are going for the high school, for the student activity fee. But in my experience, I think all high schools do it, most high schools do it. I still support the fee, and I also think it should go up with inflation as well. Because this concerns, again, as the fee stays the same, budgets increase. In regards to the other programs at the lower-level schools, I think those are really fees for people who are participating. But I would also look to the principals to look for free and reduced options at those levels, too.
It does happen there, too.
Great. I think it's also great to support the teachers, to give them additional stipends for running these programs, so the teachers who are interested in doing it can get those stipends. I know my children love to take the same courses with the same teachers because they have those connections with those teachers. So I think that's great. And also, at the primary school, I thought it was great to invite parents with great experience. My son was actually able to take a course from a parent who's also a college professor. And I thought that was amazing. He got that great opportunity to learn so much from somebody else, too, and who was an expert in their field. So I appreciate that, too.
Well, I think then what we do is we have this become an agenda item for the fall, before the budget goes in, before we're talking too far on budget, and see if there is some middle ground here somewhere. I don't think we should look at it as taking a huge hit out of the budget. I would think there must be some middle ground somewhere. I could go either way as far as the fee goes. I paid it for both of my kids. One used it, the other didn't. Yeah, he graduated, but other than that, there was no use of that fee for him. But you just paid it. I mean, it paid his class dues, too, even though he didn't use that either. And there's a certain amount of that you have to expect. But I think it's worth a look-see. I think it's worth a good look and see if there's another way of funding this and maybe seeing how other schools do it. Because there might, somebody else, you know, once again, why reinvent the wheel? Somebody may have already done it. So that would be my suggestion, if that is all right with people, that we ask Dr. Burnham to keep track of that because I won't be.
You're so excited.
She's just giddy over here.
We haven't reorganized yet, Carol. Don't get too far ahead.
I nominate Carol.
So that would be my suggestion, if that works for everybody.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, so on to old business. We're back to the calendar, Mr. Beardmore. 24-25 school calendar revisited.
Where the dates for the parent-teacher conferences have been added.
Is that the only change?
Yes.
So my only ask would be that we make the listing of these items sequential. So when we changed the January 30th parent-teacher conference, we left it in line with the October ones, so we need to drop that sequentially and how that's annotated. But other than that, I don't have any issues. Other than one issue that I think may have come up in a meeting that I had missed, or a conversation had started and we never really got to clear resolution in my mind around the end of school next year and the risks associated with senior days and graduation and that sort of thing. Do we feel like we're at a reasonable level of risk in terms of landing a first Saturday in June graduation?
Is it 12 school days or 12 days?
12 school days.
Okay.
Well, this says the 14th is five or more snow days. So I'm assuming that means it would be the 7th with four snow days. Is that correct? I mean, that's the way I read that.
That's what we have it listed as. Wait, so it's...
If we don't have an excessive amount of snow days, we should be fine to be on target. This year, you know, graduation was the earliest in June that it could be, June 1st. So next year, the first...
It would be later.
It would be the 7th.
So I...
So that's a lower risk just there.
Yeah, we'd be in school till June 26 before that became an issue.
Okay. All right. I know it came up because of the way the holidays fell this year. There was some risk there, and it just, I never closed the loop in my mind in terms of if those risks have been mitigated, but it sounds like they have.
Yeah, I think the key is just making families aware that graduation date may have to be moved. But just to be clear, the state's requirement is not that they can't have a graduation ceremony. They must have school. They must be attending school up until that window of time. They cannot be done attending school in excess of 12 days.
Before everyone else.
Before everyone else. So in theory, you could have your graduation and have kids attend school the whole next week, but I don't think many are going to attend if you don't move the graduation, so...
So for the benefit of those playing along at home who don't have access to the document or haven't seen it on the website, the website currently lists graduation as June 7th. And then the 14th is basically a backup in the event of five or more snow days. And I'm assuming that the calculus...
Does it?
One, two, three.
Yeah, I don't, well, I mean, that's what it says on the calendar. My actual question is not about the math. It's about past precedence. Have we in the past published a tentative and backup date for graduation, or is this a first?
We started doing this two years ago when, I think it was two years ago, when we had a DESI-tiered focus monitoring audit. And when they were over at the high school, meeting with some folks as part of that audit, they saw the countdown on the wall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they realized the last day of school for seniors is in three days. And then they looked at the calendar, and they said, "When is your last day of school?" And they said, "You can't do that." So immediately, that spring, we had to go and amend that year's calendar, which was going to be over in a matter of weeks. But in order to satisfy the state, we had to go back and amend the calendar to indicate, and now we indicate what the last day of school for seniors would be.
Yeah, so I think...
But that's a state thing that they happened upon accidentally, but flagged us for.
So the point that I want to make, just for the benefit of everybody, is that the first Saturday in June, while I can't recall a time that we didn't have graduation on the first Saturday in June, is not set in stone.
It's not. If you had a winter like the winter of 2015 or the 2008 ice storm...
You gotta, you gotta...
Right, like, you're gonna be moving graduation. Interesting, now that the students, the seniors, are more aware that their graduation date could be impacted. I don't get as many emails from students, senior students, asking for their... "But we haven't had any. Could we please have one?" I haven't been getting those because they don't want their graduation date to move.
Oh, sure.
And so long as people understand that, I think that that, it's all good. It's good.
Can I ask one thing about the calendar?
Sure.
I count four different fonts.
So, you know, part of that is honestly, to catch people's eyes. Different things stand out. They're in different colors. They're in different fonts. Because if it's all the same font, it all just starts to blend because it's very, very tiny.
Okay.
So that is purposeful.
And will we approve the revised school calendar for 24-25?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Excuse me.
Now we have an ARPA fund. It's interesting because we have to, I think, vote to return them. I don't know that we have to. They probably can just take them. But I think good form would be to vote to do so. I know there had been some talk about maybe we should request ARPA funds for other things, knowing that we would return what we had gotten, the $221,000 that we had initially gotten. I was looking forward to hearing the discussion last night at the Select Board, but they tabled that particular item, so I don't know what their thoughts are. But at least two members of this board have asked me about ARPA funds, so I bring, we put it back on the agenda.
So I think that we need to see through with what we.
Yes.
Projected at town meeting, and we specifically got a question about that at town meeting, and we need to do what we said.
Yes.
And I don't know that there's a formal process required for something like ARPA funds, but I think that maybe a letter is in order saying that we voted to make sure that it is our intent that this.
Those funds go back.
That those, that those funds be re-appropriated by the Select Board. Because I don't know that we would need to rescind them, but acknowledge that they will be re-appropriated. I think that I would like to understand and be communicated with from the Select Board pertaining to their plans to consider how those funds might be re-appropriated. Will there be a new process? Do they already have an order of merit list? That sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
For future opportunity for us to offer input and ideas. I can tell you that my understanding from watching finance committee meetings from the, and the decisions that the town manager made very late in the budget season pertaining to the trash program, there are very likely to be some substantial upfront costs associated with changes to the trash program in the early fall, that this money could benefit all of us.
Yes.
If it were put into use for those purposes. So I, you know, I don't want to, and again, this is entirely in the domain of the Select Board, but I would like to at least be part of the conversation in the event that they were looking at other alternatives.
I don't have a problem with that. Any other comments about that?
No, we need to give it back. We promised we would.
Yes, definitely.
We absolutely have to give it back.
So I will write a letter acknowledging that the ARPA funds will be returned back to the town to be reallocated. I will ask how will the funds, if they have a plan as to how the funds would be reallocated. I can do that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to have the chair write a letter regarding the ARPA funds.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's what we'll do. Okay, on to the FY25 budget. Speaking of ARPA.
Thought we solved this.
Well, I don't believe we ever voted.
No, we need to do this.
On this budget.
Yeah, we didn't actually, we were so focused on the.
On the pink one.
We voted on the pink one, which was what we needed to do at the time.
Now we're no longer rainbow colored. One budget. Oh, but you did keep the blue.
I think I already voted for this budget.
I think you did. I think you did.
Yes, I think you did, Brian. You had the crystal ball.
Yep.
So just, just to update you, the lines and the total in expenses and the total in salaries is not going to be exactly the same as the ESR budget, the blue budget, that we brought forward back in early February, for the reasons that the pink budget that we finally finalized and approved modified through the process as well. This reflects the most current, up-to-date information we have relative to positions that had been hard to fill. We have filled some of those for next year. So the salaries have been entered and they're reflected in this budget. There was some change to grant offsets that had been part of the initial budget, because when we looked really closely, we didn't really scrutinize the level service. This was a carryover from the spreadsheet that Mr. Cassidy had started before he left. So we didn't really scrutinize the level service, because we really didn't think that that was a likely or viable option. We really were trying to scrutinize and make decisions around that 2.5, the 2.9, and the needs-based budget. And in our process with those budgets, we recognized that Mr. Cassidy had some numbers in for the annual grant offsets for our special ed grants, for para salaries, et cetera. The total actually exceeded what we're likely going to get. So we made adjustments in this budget. So it looks like salaries lined, like, went way up. There aren't a whole bunch more things in here. We've just made hires and put in the actual salaries and made that adjustment with the grants that are part of our offset in our budget every year. We always apply a portion of the special ed grants towards the salaries for our special ed paras. So those, those lines have been updated to reflect what we know is going to be our current status. And of course, again, this is going to change throughout the summer, because we will get resignations during the summer. That happens every year. We expect to see more than usual, as we have throughout this year, because people are nervous about this, the security of their position. They don't maybe want to go through this budget cycle again, and if they have an opportunity to find something they think is more secure, they're going. And that's something that I predicted we would be seeing way back in October, when we first started having these conversations. So therefore, we made adjustments to the expense lines, so that we would set everything right, so that the bottom line dollar value was what was voted as a result of the override. But again, obviously, we bring line item transfers all the time to make adjustments as we need throughout the year. This is sort of like a preemptive one. Mr. Cassidy used to come in, you know, one of our first meetings each fall and say, "Based on hiring, we're reallocating money in this line to another line," to make sure that we covered things. Just like, well, when, when contracts are settled, we'll have to reallocate the money from the salary reserve line to the appropriate lines. So again, this is just a current reflection of adjustments that we've made to reflect current staffing that we, we know today, and, you know, made those adjustments with the expense lines to offset. Additionally, there were some adjustments made with special ed transportation and tuitions and so forth, because honestly, even in April and May, we were learning that we had new students, new responsibilities for transportation. So again, Juliana went in and changed the lines so that it's the most accurate reflection of what our budget needs are in those lines, based on what we know right now. Again, it's going to change throughout the summer and honestly, even throughout next year, and as needed, we'll be bringing in line item transfers. But this is the most accurate reflection of what that money will be allocated for.
So this didn't hit the drive until 5:30, so I haven't.
Yep.
So I haven't had a chance to go over this. Do we, can we put off?
So, so the problem with putting it off is that the new finance director has been asking for the budget so that he can preload munis with the dollar values for each of these lines, as well as the department heads at the high school in particular, before they leave for the summer, need to submit what their orders would be for next year's budget, so they need to know what their lines are. There, there weren't a.
There weren't a ton of adjustments. I can. Yeah, because I, it's, there's, I didn't have time. I don't, on my tablet, can't do it easily. I wanted to compare it to FY24 budgeted and the FY23 actual.
Give me a second. I'll.
But I have, I haven't had a chance to go over this line by line like I'd like to. So I'm not very comfortable voting on it. If we vote on it tonight, I think I would abstain.
Mr. Lightman?
I would say we're not really voting on the individual line items, but really the total. We're adjusting the budget based off of the override change in the budget. So it's really just the dollar amount. So I feel comfortable.
Yep. So I can tell you where some adjustments were made. There was a slight reduction, $5,000 in the admin tech contracted services line. There was a slight adjustment made by Juliana, based on a transition that we're making from one IEP software to a different one, so she has a different line for the special ed computer contracted services is now 20,000.
Can you give the number, then, if she's looking for it, that this number?
Oh.
Either the line on the Excel.
It's under the section in the budget, 2110, special education. Third line down, special ed computer contracted services.
Line 27, okay.
Then she can.
Curriculum adoption was reduced by 5,000. That's 2110.
Wait, it's now 2110?
Nope, it's the section 2110 in the budget.
Excel 32.
The number was similar, so, okay.
Section 2415, primary school, math supplies is now 500, and library books is zero. But again, that, those changes were made in consultation with the principals, based on the fact that we were advised by our finance consultants, that they felt comfortable that we had enough funds to finish the year well. So we told the principals that they could go and order this year's budget lines and order their supplies. So they are expending their budget lines that had been frozen in this year. So those adjustments have been made based on that information at the building level. There was an adjustment to section 2420, elementary school instructional equipment. The science supplies and the phys ed supplies were reduced a little bit there. Section 2710, guidance. There was a reduction or an adjustment to the primary school guidance supplies line. Mrs. Hanscom made an adjustment under section 2800, the psychological services. She made an adjustment to the testing supplies, again, knowing that she was able to purchase some testing supplies now. She also made an adjustment to the special ed transportation line, and that reflects the now known added students.
What was the change on that?
It's 3,300.
Okay. I'll go back and pull up the multi-version in a minute. The electricity line under the section 4130, utility services, that line was adjusted after consultation with our finance consultant, who analyzed our bills through this year and the projected cost to pay out through June 30, after consulting with the vendors and their projections for our costs through June. So I made that adjustment there. Same is true for the water consumption line. Those were made based on an analysis of the year's.
Up or down?
Bills.
Up or down?
Because I know the electricity went up a bunch, and then.
The electricity went up a bunch from the very beginning.
Okay. Yep. Okay, so this is taking that into account, but not.
I'm just thinking through here, and I understand that these adjustments are continual, and I trust that we're doing the right thing here, and I'm, I understand the need to do things inside of the next week that put us in a situation where we would be to our advantage to approve this tonight. Where are the E911 and the, the new router projects accounted for in this?
Those were in the computer purchase and lease line.
What line is that?
7,400.
Okay, we do.
And.
The other one.
So computers purchase and lease, or equipment maintenance and lease?
The.
I think it was purchase and lease.
Purchase and lease was the network.
The network security stuff.
Okay.
And the other one. Was it through networking?
It was.
Because telecommunications.
Maintenance of buildings and grounds, maintenance of buildings contracted services.
What line is that?
4220.
Maintenance of building contracted services.
That is the what?
That's the.
4220, the maintenance of buildings contracted service was the 911.
What was the 2024 number for that?
The what?
2024. What was?
Previous year.
What was the previous year on that? I don't know.
So what, I guess I'm, so the E911 is a one-time expense.
Correct.
Yep.
So, and refresh my, it was, can't remember the number on that.
69, I think.
69,000. So is that absorbed in that $80,000 of building supplies and systems?
Contracted service.
The one I believe.
The problem is, is it's not a contracted service.
So I didn't know exactly where to put this against a budget line. We can certainly consult with our, with our financial people.
Yeah.
To move that if they feel that there's a more appropriate line for it, but that's where it has been.
That's where it's now.
Yep.
Where do we put phone stuff?
Okay. My reason for asking those questions specifically is obviously.
It was a sensitive.
I'm concerned about, these are the things that we said the override was going to, and I would like to be able to articulate. That's the line.
That's where.
And I think what I'm having difficulty translating in my head right now is, is that we don't, for once, we don't have multiple columns to look at.
Yeah, I sort of ran out of time, because I'm doing budget projections and impacts for two different contract negotiations and a few other things, so I didn't have time for the budget sheet that had the rainbow colors. But I can tell you that in FY25, the maintenance of buildings contracted service line was 145,000, and when we removed the 911 compliance, because it was going to be funded through ARPA, the budget that you approved, the line was 161,967 dollars.
There you go.
So it's back, we didn't touch that from the original.
Yep. And again, I'm not purposely trying to be difficult, but we're accountable for this, and.
Yep.
Carol and I are the ones who stood on stage at town meeting and said, "This is where the money's going," so I just want to make sure that we know where it's going, so.
It's there.
Okay.
Did we end up asking for an earmark for the E911 system?
Yes.
We did, and I requested, it was an interesting turn of events. I requested that any monies, because it was being funded under ARPA, that if they were going to be able to fund something, please fund the police request, which went forward. I mean, nothing's settled yet. The police request went forward, but Representative Scarsdale told me that the E911 also went forward, that she mistakenly did not take it off. that she mistakenly did not take it off. So if it does go through, then we have sixty-nine extra thousand dollars, which I didn't anticipate happening because I didn't know we were going to end up with this budget, so maybe it was like.
Here's to errors in Excel spreadsheets.
Okay.
They were.
Um, what are the chances of that? When will we know?
Um, forever, July.
July is when they.
And, and they rescinded a great deal of them in the fall.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I, you know, I don't know what to tell you on that.
Yeah, and that, for the, the, a little bit of background, that Milo training system fell, I believe, just below the line on the capital plan.
On the capital plan, it was thirty-three thousand.
It is an outstanding idea, like, and we should support this.
Yeah, and, and I was happy to tell.
With the police department, like, that is, in my opinion, having sat through the presentations on the capital planning committee, we should do that.
Yep.
Um, it's, we need, our police officers need that level of training and it will benefit us, God forbid.
Of course, of course.
Okay.
Okay.
Other lines. The high school repair of science equipment under section forty-two-thirty was reduced by a hundred dollars, which is still more than the needs-based budget that we had approved at a thousand at that time. The primary school new furniture line was adjusted to five thousand. The section seventy-four-hundred replace equipment, the computer purchase and lease are reduced slightly because we're anticipating that we'll be able to make some computer purchases with monies from the current year. So that's, that was a safe reduction there, we felt. And again, you've got the adjustments from the special ed tuitions and transportation.
The school covers unemployment? That's not a town? That's not on the town budget?
Right.
The school covers that?
When, I did ask Mr. Cassidy about that one day and he said that unemployment is cheaper than health insurance.
Oh, absolutely.
So he said it was not something to be overly concerned about.
Oh, I was just, I.
Cause I did ask him that specifically before he left.
Much cheaper than.
In the original ESER budget, special ed tuitions private, we had that line funded at two hundred sixty-nine thousand six ninety-nine.
That went up a little.
And the collaborative tuitions were three sixty-nine, four fifteen.
It just had to go up.
Um, and we know that we have additional students that we've had to pick up, so, again, she's made those adjustments.
Yeah.
Those are the things we need to make sure that we have funded well. So there were some minor reductions in other lines to either compensate for the lines that needed to be increased or.
Did you highlight?
To compensate for the salaries line going up.
The reductions too, when we were going through this, you highlighted the places where we reduced?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, you did, okay.
Mr. Layton?
I'll make a motion that we reconsider the FY twenty-five budget.
Um. I don't know how you deal with that procedurally.
Procedurally, well, we probably.
I think you just approved in the lines.
The budget.
So we have to reconsider?
Because the bottom.
I thought we did this before.
I don't know. I think it's the lines as presented, because it's the bottom line budget is still the bottom line budget.
We never voted this bottom line budget.
We never voted for twenty to twenty-four.
You voted a different budget.
So, so we never voted this amount, so I think we reconsider.
Again.
Yep.
But.
And then we have to make another motion.
You can, because we changed it already and you voted no to change it.
Okay, you're right.
I was thinking the same thing, I was like, can I do it? Can Peter do it?
It's your turn this time.
My motion, I made the motion.
So just so that everybody knows, I am now referring to this budget, not as the ESER budget, because it's been adjusted
Right.
to reflect the override. So this is the FY twenty-five override budget.
After we vote it, it'll be the FY twenty-five budget.
There we go.
Just one budget.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor to reconsider the budget. And did we get a second?
You have, you have a second, okay.
Oh, a second?
Thank you very much. All those in favor to reconsider the budget?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I need a motion to approve the budget of twenty-four million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty-five budget as presented at twenty-four million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
You're going to abstain, that's fine. Okay, so, so that's done, and we thank everybody that had all this to do with this. That was a long and winding road. Okay, now we have school improvement.
So you have, you have.
The acronym got me.
The school improvement plans from each of the schools with updated progress as they're closing out the current school year. Again, the principals are still here, if you have any specific questions, otherwise we can just move on, you don't have to take any action here.
Did anybody have any questions on the school improvement plans?
I have not read them, so I'm going to have to defer my questions to a later date.
I did read them and I was happy with the progress. Things seemed to go along swimmingly and pleased in general.
I appreciate the thoughtfulness that goes behind these plans and the immense amount of effort that has been made and the strides they made. So, thank you.
Okay, so seeing no questions and we have no action to take, we thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, now on to topics for the delegation. So at our last meeting, I said, if you have any additional topics, send them to me. I didn't get any, so this is the list I have. The bus bidding process, state funding, the need to add inflation factor to chapter seventy. That was kind of killed at the senate level. Revenue from the millionaire's tax, need for increased local funding, focus on Lunenburg, unique in a sea of regionals, is the way I put that.
That's a good way to put it.
That's what I have here, I did look at the cherry sheet that came out of the senate and chapter ninety, uh, chapter ninety, I get roads on my mind. Chapter seventy came out for us, ten thousand dollars more. And I haven't yet, though I need to, contact John Cronin and ask him. I did ask him already, but I didn't ask him what the ten thousand was from because he said he was still pushing all the different school bills, including that inflation factor. But that didn't make it through, but what did make it through.
It didn't make it through with all the.
Not through the senate.
Pressure from the superintendent's association and the mass association school committee.
Not through the senate.
It's a huge budgetary.
But what did make it through was aid to rural schools, which we teeter on depending on the day, and the one-ten per head for held harmless. And my question for him is, we are not held harmless, I understand, but the difference between thirty a head and one-ten a head, is that more than what we were getting under low income? So I'm not sure where that ten thousand came from, is my, is my comment. So I have to get back to him and ask him, I, I did ask him to look into, I talked to him for quite a while, asked him to look into the rural school thing, but I haven't heard back.
So. I, I think all of the points that you listed off, Carol, are germane to the conversation. I think we have gotten an enormous amount of news over the last two or three months pertaining to this amendment and that bill and here's another thing and inflation and hold harmless and I was personally thrilled, like, I'm the one who asked for the whole harmless number, thinking that we were in it and, as it turns out, they did it.
We're not, but it's good for a lot of places.
But my understanding is, is that it raises the floor for everybody, but it's not a situation where the rising tide lifts all boats, it's just the, it's just the boats that are in that harbor. And, and I, I would like to understand the rationale of the delegation as they approach these issues through a Lunenburg lens.
Yep.
And I, I think that they ought to be able to articulate that, because I play a little bit closer attention to this than the average bear and I am still thoroughly confused by it. And, and I just, I mean, I understand that it's a messy process, but, but I think we can provide for them the forum to be able to explain it.
Yep, I'm, I'm fine with that. I also don't think, I think this is a separate conversation than Margaret's big meeting with everybody.
I hope so.
That she's organizing. So I think our job here is twofold. One is to, I think we have a solid list and now what we have to do is figure out a time for them to come. If, if that's going to be summertime, if that's going to be in the fall. What is, maybe the best thing to do is to reach out to them and say, when in your calendar does it make sense in your year, like, in September is like the house a crazy place to be in? I don't know, I don't know the ebbs and flows of the state government time. When is a good time for them to get to us? It has to be by the fall, because the last time they said, you were supposed to talk to us in the fall, I had no idea I was supposed to talk to anybody.
Well, we.
So, so I, that's why we right away.
A good time, a good time is two or three months ago. But given where we're at in the budget process right now, I don't know that this discussion is going to have any bearing on the outcome of what happens on Beacon Hill in July or August.
No, it's not going to, because that's already gone through.
And I, I just, I, I feel like we ought to be thinking about this in terms of how we, how we get to the best possible outcomes. And, and it is more outcomes in terms of communication and advocacy at this point than actual budget dollars, right? And, and so I don't see urgency on this the way I saw it three months ago, like, that ship has sailed and.
It got us ten thousand dollars and that's, I mean, I'm not going to scoff at ten thousand dollars.
Well, we may not get it, who knows?
Yeah, but it's, it's disappointing that the amount of advocacy and people asking for help and asking for help specifically for Lunenburg schools and the help did not go to Lunenburg schools. That's disappointing, we're not a hold harmless district, so I don't know if the rate, if the increase affected us, I don't know where the ten thousand came from. I think that. And then Representative Scarsdale's focus has been almost entirely on regional transportation, which just affects us not at all. So it's, it's disappointing that we have basically been begging for help and I know parents have been writing emails too and it is disappointing that that money is not coming to us.
So I think it makes sense to start in the fall and then we continue the process throughout the, the winter and then in the spring? Just continually inform them and adjust our views as needed as the year goes along.
I'm just not sure how much it's going to do.
One other potential issue that, that I think we we, we may want to have some discussion about is to revisit the smart growth issue. And, and not necessarily the specifics of whether we qualify or not, but what can the legislature do to hold bureaucrats more accountable when it comes to the disruption that their poor management has on towns like ours?
Yep.
I mean, we added that overlay zone and now it's still the overlay zone, but we're not getting the money for it.
And I understand the calculus of it.
Oh, no, it's just, it seems very.
I think that the.
Broken.
I think that it, we bought into a failed, we bought into a failed program.
Right.
And it, I mean, a failed program, the re, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not a, a story of success in the state of Massachusetts and it's not a priority for anybody and as a result of that, it's way down the list when you determine, oh, you don't qualify and it's a mid-year cut. But I suspect that there are probably a lot of programs that fall into that category and I just, I feel like that there's a a level of accountability that doesn't exist.
So. So I'm going to somehow craft these in a response to Representative Scarsdale for that July whatever I said.
Twelfth.
Is Representative Kishmir gonna, is this a Scarsdale only thing?
No, no, this is Representative Scarsdale with Desi.
Okay.
That's the July thing.
It was twelfth, thirteenth.
We're talking about a separate.
But we are talking about a separate thing, but I think both lists.
Oh, yeah.
Both, the list goes for both events, because these are the things we're concerned about.
You got unfunded mandates on there, right? That's what, that's my beef with Desi, as anyone who's watched a meeting. The unfunded mandates, if you're gonna start handing out mandates, I want to know where the money's going to come from.
Okay, got it. So we will do that, we'll find out when the date of that other meeting is and then we'll figure out.
Send the representative, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so are we all set on this?
Yes.
All right, moving along. The assessment report, they've been so patient.
So you have summary of the slides in the packet. I'm just trying to pull. Get that up now.
What was the goal we were going for with this one?
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent honor above.
Eighty percent honor above.
Okay.
Can you see it now? So Mrs. Scott can just sort of give you the highlights here of what we're, what we're seeing.
Sure. So we're going for the eighty percent goal of honor above per classroom, it is a combination of mid or above and early on, the grade level, but they're all green, so to speak, we kept that as a reasonable goal. I did include in the slides four, five and six for reading the classroom breakdown because that is something we're taking into consideration, you can see that, you know, K one is right there at seventy-nine, two, three, all met the goal as a grade level. But then if you look at the primary school, for example, you can see the breakdown of classrooms and we, we do take into consideration, all right, what is the makeup of that classroom? What, we, we want to consider how students are performing within each room and, and understand why there might be discrepancies. And as you get up into where they start team teaching in Turkey Hill and the middle school, we definitely see a discrepancy. There'll be a, a class taught by the same teacher. One might be in the eighties and one might be in the sixties, but again, we're paying attention to exactly who's in the class, but we also want to make sure that we're providing common instruction, common support across a team because we don't have our classes leveled outside of math in grade eight for K through eight. And the reason I included, so if you look and you can see that many classrooms did hit the eighty.
Yeah.
In some grade levels, I also wanted to show you that there might be a, a room that kind of affected the average and that there are reasons for that in most cases. But I did want to show that, you know, so many teachers did even get into the nineties, one has a hundred, I mean, it's, they should be so proud of that, and even if you, you didn't quite hit it, And even if you, you didn't quite hit it, you're, what, we did reach the goal of teachers now paying attention to where a student is. Okay, my student's in the yellow, so to speak, so they're one grade level below. What does this student need to get on grade level? Um, if you look down to the math, we were a little low with our percentages, but we're moving in the right direction. I did do the percent change from winter, from spring of last year. So that would be the same teachers, but different grade level. I did the percent change from the cohort. So where was that cohort? If they're now in fifth grade, what's the percent change from how they were performing in fourth? And then back to 2022, um, to show the change there. I mean, in these past few years, we've been working to close gaps, implement new curriculums, K through eight in ELA, which, you know, that deserves some grace because the undertaking of implementing a new curriculum is, is very large. We had a literacy specialist, the first year of implementation, didn't have a, a dedicated literacy specialist this year. We will again next year, thankfully.
That was one of our hard to fill positions this year.
Um, and then I showed you the class breakdown for math as well. I did include, um, so the highlights, 11 of 16 classes at primary, 10 of 16 at Turkey Hill reached the 80% or above. Um, we have dedicated educators working to close those gaps. Again, implementing new materials. We're still working with our multi-tiered system of support model and offering the co-teaching for teachers. But in the end of the slides, um, I included some slides on student placement in small groups because next year we really want to focus. And we've talked about writing some goals around, uh, small group instruction and targeted intervention. And one of the ways that we're going to do that is this slide that says student placement process. Um, this is actually language from iReady and something that iReady suggests. But as a starting point, taking students and grouping them in classrooms so that no given classroom has more than three kind of concentrated groups of students. And when you're looking at purple and, and blue, those are high achieving. So they, those, it's really green, you know, they're all mid or above level.
Um, yeah.
But no given room would have yellow and red. So you can focus on your on-level and high achieving students and then supporting those who might be two or more grade levels below or those who are one, different, um, types of interventions. So we're going to see, and we used, um, some of the national norm percentiles to place them. Amy Resnick has been working with the principals on that. Um, and then we've been working as part of the DESI Literacy Academy to create flow charts to help us group students so for targeted intervention. Every student receives tier one, it's universal instruction. But then beyond that, you're either going to have some on-level and challenge work. And we have specific scores to, to put you in these groups. And then of course, ultimately the teachers can move students accordingly. Then you have tier two A, which would be, um, instruction. We, in small groups, we recommend, you know, three times 15 minutes a week. For example, two, tier two B should be increased number of minutes, different types of targeted intervention. And we're getting into, um, exactly what type of progress monitoring assessments we're going to use in literacy. And then tier three, which isn't always special ed, but does include special ed. Again, kind of, um, making a consistent policy for our structure for here are the progress monitoring tools that everybody is going to use to assess children and to, um, help create that, that structured literacy plan for the foundational skills. We'll do the same in math. I just gave you the ELA example. Did you have any questions?
Questions from anyone?
Another thing we do is we look at the growth. I just wanted to mention again, um, annual typical growth should be 100%. A student should be growing at least 100%. When we're trying to close gaps, we're looking for them to grow more than 100%. The median growth is here, so that's a little sometimes tricky.
Yeah.
Um, we don't just look at the median. A teacher will go in and look at, at all the student growth and we will as well. And then we're looking for obviously ideally 100, 100% of students meet at least the typical growth. That's rare, um, but you'll see those percentages too. So you might have a teacher who has really high achieving students in class, but if we see that the growth is low.
I was gonna say, is that classroom Q right there? Classroom Q seemed to have that scenario.
Yep.
Is that the eighth grade as a cumulative? Is that what happened to, the eighth grade had 58% annual growth?
I didn't plan to designate like what teacher was doing what, or even really what grade level. Um, I will say that in the eighth grade, like I said, the only, the only classes that we have leveled, so to speak, are, are math classes. We have the two accelerated right now and, um, three, no, we have four other classes. So again, we're taking a close look. It's, it's hard work for the teachers. They're, they really are, um, using this data more than they, than they used to, I will say. It's only one measure, just like MCAS is only one measure, but it's a good starting point for us and it gives us information. We'll be sending information home to families next week so they can see not only where their child is scoring, but then the breakdown of the domains within, which I think is helpful too.
Mr. Beardmore.
Um, this question may not come across the right way. Take it for what it's worth and then I may have a comment after. How are we doing?
We are working to get as many of our students honor above grade level and meeting and exceeding standards as we can. We can compare.
You told me what we're doing, I want to know, how are we doing? We're doing well? Are we doing great? Are we doing mediocre? Are we doing poorly?
I'll jump in.
How are we doing?
I think it's different at different grade levels. So we're seeing some really good outcomes at the primary level. Um, but there are factors that we need to think about. All the kids currently at the primary level are post-COVID students, right? It's the kids above there that had the COVID impact. We're going to be chasing and closing gaps for those kids. Really, if we're honest, for their entire academic career. Um, I think we, when you think about how we're doing, uh, Annika alluded to this a little bit. We have, uh, I would say at the primary level and the Turkey Hill, uh, level, we have staff buy-in. They, they, they understand what we're doing and why we're, we're doing this. Um, it, it's scary for teachers when you put a number and a target on a goal. And you're looking at this data and you're looking at it with them three times a year when the benchmarks are done. We've seen the cultural shift to embracing the use of this kind of data to inform our instruction. And that shift has been stronger at the primary and the Turkey Hill level. But we started using data at those grade levels a year before we, we started doing this work with the middle school.
And I'll add to, the MTSS triangle is where we got the goal for the 80% because that's kind of an ideal model, so to speak. 80% of your students honor above, um, 5% to a more grade levels below and 10 yellow. You could compare us to state averages if you look at an MCAS and say, how are we doing there in comparison to state? I always fall back to, that's great, we're doing better than a lot of the state. But in Lunenburg, we want the kids to be honor above grade level. And we've been working with, you know, we've been working hard to do that. I did want to also add, um, I say this is one measure and it's frustrating for teachers sometimes in a grade like fifth or eighth, they have to take three MCAS tests. Eighth grade had to take four this year. They went to DC and came back and did iReady.
Yeah.
I 100% see that in the data. And I myself pulled students down to the project room and gave them a pep talk and had them finish their iReady. But at some point you, you do lose some momentum from students after all that testing and at the end of the year. I try to convey to teachers, we, we can't, we need to, you know, make sure our students understand the importance, but.
Yeah, and I think that, um, you know, again, in this process, we're a year behind progress-wise with, um, the middle school because we started with the K5 level and then expanded to do this work with the 6-8. So we are in, in the curve, so to speak. We're a year behind with, with the 6-8. The other thing is, is that the K5, this was second year implementation of two rigorous on-grade level aligned curricula, math and ELA. This was the first year for, um, an ELA curriculum for 6-8. So again, first year implementation. They're gonna do some adjustment, uh, based on the experience they had with the curriculum this year. Um, and we, as you know, have piloted and recently adopted what we're doing for math, 6-8 for next year. So next year there will be a brand new rigorous on-grade level, standards-aligned math curriculum for six through eight as our core curriculum. The teachers, I'm just going to be honest, it's a process. We've been asking teachers to teach differently, to embrace data, to look closely, to provide intervention, group students, differentiate instruction. We've asked them to do a lot. It's a process. And my belief is that we have made significant progress in that process of teachers thinking about their instruction in a different way now. We are still in the process with teachers at the middle school level. We didn't have that level of engagement the first year we did this work with the K5 either. It is a process. We need to continue to do this work, particularly with our, our middle school teachers. And I think when they start seeing results, they, they will, uh, start to, uh, embrace this a bit more. It's not uncommon for teachers, and you have two teachers sitting here at the table tonight. It's not uncommon for teachers to, uh, offer some resistance to change, right? They have expertise, they've been doing this a long time. You know, what makes this curriculum better or looking at data or what makes any of this better? It's a process. And some, uh, some move through the process quickly and others, it takes more time. Um, but, but we are sticking with the same message.
I will say to the middle school teachers credit, the majority of them dug in and, and were models for a first year amplifying implementation. I also want to point out that this is a reading test only with iReady. Again, one measure. And the ELA standards are a beast and a large portion of those standards are writing and language. So we can in the future, um, we can firm up using some of the module assessment pieces of writing as more of a consistent measure. When you're grading writing, it's more objective. Um, and so that's something we can consider. I hesitate to put in additional assessments. We, we're starting to max out on that.
And that's something that we need to really think about in a thoughtful way. We need to have some assessments. We need to have some data to inform what the kids need. But we need to be careful that we're not sacrificing instructional time for additional assessments.
In the early literacy screening guidelines for K through three, we're using this data and DIBELS data to identify students. I, I don't bring.
Do we screen all the students with DIBELS?
Everybody in K through three.
They all get.
And then follow-up in three, it would be.
How often do we screen them?
Same windows, fall, winter. Um, when you're getting into the older grades, so for three, only if you were flagged, would you be re-screened. But K1 and two, they do fall, winter and spring alongside iReady.
Do you have those scores or is that something we don't?
We have all the DIBELS data. I, if I present it to you, I'd also need to help you.
Does it align with the iReady? I guess my question is, does that align with what you're seeing with the iReady scores?
They usually align, student scores. It's definitely if we see a big discrepancy, we, we dig deeper. Um, it's a different type of test. I can explain it to you at some point and, and show you. Within DIBELS, there are multiple types of, they're testing oral reading fluency, for example, word recognition, that all, different types of things.
Mr. Beardmore.
Uh, I have one more question.
Mm-hmm.
Similar to the last question that I asked, and then I have a comment. Where, where did we land here, generally speaking, relative to where you thought we were going to land this year? Are, are our internal indicators, how we're feeling about it? You know, are, are feelings of success or failure over the course of the school year, are those borne out in test scores or are we surprised by our, by our scores?
I think, I'll jump in on this one. I think, and I'm just going to speak honestly, for me to come here publicly two years ago and say, this is our goal, 80% on grade level, every grade, that's bold.
That was bold.
That was bold. And that was a huge risk because you're talking about teachers post-COVID with some real fatigue. And we asked them post-COVID to teach in a different way, look at data, analyze data, differentiate instruction, adopt new curriculum. I would never, that's not ideal. That is not ideal at all. You would never say two, two new curricula for next year. But the funds were there to get the curriculum. And we never in this district would be able to fund an adoption of five grade levels in a single year. We would have had to do it over multiple years, grade level by grade level. It would have taken us so much longer. For me, I'm like really happy with where we landed, particularly in the lower grades. Like what? We hit the goal, we exceeded the goal? That's amazing, amazing.
Yeah.
The fact that we had teachers, oh, well, fell short, you know, we hit 72% or whatever on grade level. Given that some of these classes had a starting place two years ago of 39% on grade level, okay, we didn't, we didn't hit the mark, but hello, we made a lot of progress in two years. Two years with tired teachers that we asked a lot of. They gave it everything they had. Again, in the process, we're a year behind the curve compared to where we are in the process with K through five. There's still a lot of room. There's work for us to do at the 6-8 level. There is, and we're not going to sugarcoat that. Honestly, I think we fell short of what I thought we would be able to do at the 6-8 level. But I, I think K5 killed it. And I didn't think that we would have the kinds of scores that we got from many, many of the kids. Um, so.
So let me.
In the big picture, there's good and bad. I think, I think we're, we still have work to do. But being a realist in the, the context that we were asking teachers to do this overall, I'm, I'm really pleased. Teachers have worked hard.
So there are, let me just offer some comments here. Just again, this is from my perspective. I want to reflect these back to you and you can comment or think about it or, or what have you. Um, and, and I think that your assessment is completely fair. Um, some of these jumps are extraordinary, just as you pointed out. Um, however, I'm not an educator, I'm a marketer. I'm constantly telling my people, don't get lost in the numbers. Let's look at the bigger picture. Let's think about how we're communicating this and how we're leading not only our staff and our students, but also our parents and our community as we're setting expectations. And a big part of my job is managing customer expectations so that they aren't disappointed on the back end. They're, they're, we exceed their expectations in the long haul so long as they come along. in the long haul, so long as they come along with us and pay the money, right, as we're going along. I think, for the most part, we have a lot to show for here. That said, if I were an 8th-grade parent, sitting in my presentation at town meeting, I'd be calling me tomorrow, saying, "I think you sold me a bill of goods." And I feel pretty bad about that. And I think that we need to, we need to be thoughtful about that. I don't know, I don't know what's going on there. I don't wanna cast any dispersions, but I, like, holy cow, those are, those are-
To be fair, 8th grade is the one that tested the day after they got back from the DZ track.
And they do a lot more testing than any others. Now, that said, we were looking at the iReady results even last spring, and we were disappointed with, "What, this is not good data." But then the MCAS data came back stronger than the iReady data. So we think that there's a perception challenge around iReady. If the teachers didn't value it, if that was somehow conveyed to students, then they don't value it. If there's no motiv- and you know, being educators, the older the kids get, they kinda need to have a motivation for, "Why does this matter to me? Why am I doing this?" And that is also on us to help kids understand what their motivation is, to do their best job on this assessment. So we definitely still have work to do there. I would say to any parent who is calling you and concerned about, "They got sold a bill of goods, 8th grade, numbers are horrid." Let's wait and see what MCAS looks like. Because last year, MCAS came back stronger than the iReady data, and that was a great relief, because we were very concerned. Because at every other, at the earlier grade levels, the results tend to correlate, which is why we think at the 6-8 level, the kids are older, you know, what's my, why am I doing? Those kinds of things, their attitude about things starts to come into play with the performance. So it's complicated. And again, Annika says this all the time, this is one measure. It may not be a true reflection of what the kids actually know and can do on an assessment. We'll have to wait. Mr. Santri has something to say on this, too, I think. But I think that the jury's out until we see how the kids did with MCAS.
So before Mr. Santri speaks, I just wanna make one final comment, and I promise I'll shut up. I think that we collectively, all of us, need to think about how we're communicating this stuff. And it's back to getting lost in the data here, right? And with all due respect, this presentation, I know these numbers came in late, and there wasn't a lot of time to synthesize them, and we're trying to do an assessment, like, there's a lot going on here. We've got to simplify our communication and the way we talk about these things. What were our expectations? What did we do? What's the delta? Why does the delta exist? What are we doing about it? Right? Like, I mean, there's five components to this, and we're consistently just, like, I look at these spreadsheets, and I'm like, "What number do I look at?" There isn't even a circle anywhere around these, you know, like, and then I'm not an educator, so my first 10 minutes are always, like, orienting myself to this data. And I can't imagine what a parent who doesn't do this twice a year goes through. I don't know. And so I just, I think collectively, we need to think about how we are communicating achievement across the board.
I don't disagree. I think the breakdown in all of the numbers was, in this presentation, it's much more for you all than it is for the parents. Because if you're looking to see, "Oh, did they hit the 80? Oh, they didn't. Oh, well, that's too bad, you didn't hit it." But the breakdown by individual teacher in classroom, it's like, "But three out of five did."
And I get that, but my mindset, though, is, we're communicating not just to parents of other individual kids. We, as a school committee, are now the marketing department for the Lunenburg schools when it comes to the town of Lunenburg, right? And so we can't expect the town to look at these numbers and come to the same conclusions that you come to. We've got to help them, you know, we've gotta help them along here.
Yeah. And I think that, like I said, MCAS, when we come in in the fall with the MCAS, it'll give another layer to understanding what the kids are, what they actually know.
It's just a point in time, and I get that. And I don't, and for the public, I don't wanna create the perception that I'm the marketing department for the schools. It was a, to illustrate a point here, which is, we're trying to ask the town to support us. We need to be relevant and transparent with our communications.
Yep. And I would say, like I said, you can see that, but it was true before. We are stronger with literacy at the lower grades than we are with math. That's still consistent. However, where we started from two years ago, I am, I am really, really pleased with the progress that was made, particularly at the primary level. Even the Turkey Hill level, the performance there was strong compared to where we started two years ago. And yes, the data is not as strong at the middle school level. We recognize that. We didn't hide that last year. It's still, to look at it now, it's still disappointing. But I don't think it tells the whole picture. And like I said, at those ages, there are other factors that come into play around a student's performance as compared to when they're in the second grade. So we're digging in on this. But I would say, really happy with the progress that was made, K-5, in both literacy and math, in two years' time, in a post-COVID world with tired teachers. Yep, we're not as far in on the process with the middle school. We're a year behind because we didn't start working with that grade level right away. There will be continued progress, but the story on the overall performance and are we happy with the progress being made, I think we need to wait and see what the MCAS data tells us in September. Mr. Santri?
Yeah, Tim Santri, I just kinda wanna reiterate. I do think it's unfair to attack the 8th-grade teachers based on one iReady test, because the iReady test is really, as Ms. Scott said, just assessing reading, and that is really only one component of what the 8th grade is teaching. They're teaching language and writing. So to be assessed on one component, and I know it's been said over and over again, this is a grade level that has four high-stakes testing. And then actually, they had NAEP testing this year also. And then when you put, in the eyes of an 8th grader, a no-stakes test, it's really difficult to get them to perform as hard on that test as you would like them to. And as we said, these benchmark testings are new to the middle school. And I'd just like to remind the committee that our MCAS scores at the middle school have been in the top third of the state for the past decade. So to say that the iReady scores are a correlation to our teaching, I think is unfair.
I also wanna add that, when you say, like, "How are we doing?", I know you want a simple number, but it isn't simple. There's so much that goes into it, and there's so much that we take into consideration, that I don't think it's fair to put one number on a whole grade level and a whole group of teachers and say, "Here's how we're doing."
I respect your opinion, but we have to do a better job at communicating our qualitative view at quantitative information, right? And I completely understand your point. We've got to help translate this. And there's a lot of numbers here, and, you know, it's very difficult to draw a conclusion from the information that, as written, was presented tonight.
And it may be a question on whether, is iReady the mode that we want to report out to the community on how our students are doing at that grade level? Is there, does that come with other information, along with our MCAS and individual scores and our teachers' grades? Is that an accurate reflection of how our students-
And I mean, we are at a point now where we may be able to, you know, do some trend analysis around the comparisons of those various data points at different grade levels. Like, I totally get-
And the value of doing the assessment. And it may be an assessment that we continue to do three times a year with a subset of the 8th grade, if they are students that we're tracking because we're concerned about where they are and we're trying to provide intervention. But maybe for the entire 8th grade, we move away from this. This is really about giving you the evidence for the goal that we had as a two-year goal for myself, for the leadership team, and for many of our educators who jumped on to the goal. And, you know, for somebody who used to do the analysis of data, your assessment-
I really like this. I really like all these numbers, and I know it's because I speak that language. I'm really pleased with this, really pleased with this. I would expect the middle school to be lesser, because first off, they spent so much time doing things a different way. And then when they're getting, "I have the school thing down, I know what to do. Oh, now you're giving me this weird test." You know, it's, they don't have that from when they're little. It's a different, it's a different thing. And with the change in curriculum being just a limited amount of time, I can see that. In the math scores, at the 8th grade, you have two classes where the cream is pulled. And so that's gonna look differently. But with my teacher hat on, I'm, I think, "You did a really good job." I think, I mean, not everybody's at 80%, but we didn't expect. The goal, when you say, "I'm setting a goal of 80%," to me, that's like, this is where we wanna be, and as close as we can get to it, we've done well. We didn't expect everybody jumping over it. And we didn't even expect everybody to get to it. But the difference, I think, is, speaks well. And I think as the kids are, you know, the next year, you'll have, you know, stronger scores. And if we find this doesn't work in the 8th grade, this may not be the best indicator. This particular, you know, test may be better K to 5, and maybe 6 to 8, we need to find something different, or not.
And we started having those conversations, too.
Or common assessments within the, in the grade levels. You know, there may be other places, but from, with my teacher hat and my curriculum hat on, I think you should be really pleased.
I think there may be other assessments, possibly, for the 8th graders. But I was just thinking about this week, proctoring the MCAS and reading off the statement to the kids, which basically scares them into, "Oh, no, I might not graduate. This data's going to my parents." Maybe there's some sort of statement that we can even read to the 8th graders that makes it a little bit more important. Maybe we could draft up something that puts a little bit more pressure on them, that, "Oh, yeah, my parents are gonna get this data." And all the teachers are scripted with that information that really kinda puts a little bit more emphasis on it. Secondly, to what Mr. Beardmore was mentioning, too, about just kinda presenting the data a little better, I was looking at some of the other assessment reports, and even the Fall 2023 Assessment Report, the highlights page was like the second or third slide. And I think maybe something like that for all of them, just kind of so when parents read it, they maybe hit the highlights, and that might be the only slide they hit. But we really make that more of the marketing slide of, "Okay, this is the highlights, these are the key numbers," and then the full-on data of everything. That's my thoughts.
Laura?
Is there a link between teacher buy-in into iReady and the scores? Have you seen that as far as the teachers who won't incorporate it into their practice, and the teachers who are less confident in iReady and the results?
I would say no, in general.
Okay. How much does class makeup affect-
That could be, there could be an outlier or two there, but in general.
How much does class makeup affect the scores as far as?
I don't, I mean, I think class makeup can affect your discussions. It can affect your group work. I mean, so certainly, it's hard to quantify, but class makeup can make a difference.
And my last question is, how do we celebrate the teachers that did really fantastic and had really good scores? Do we do something to recognize the fact that, you know, some of these grades did fantastic and have really made a lot of progress?
So the specialists, and this year, it's, we only have a math specialist right now. So, and actually, at the end of last year, we didn't either. I went in and met with the literacy teachers last year. The principals have all these reports, and they are also the evaluators. So they meet and talk and evaluate with the teachers around this data. You know, again, there's so much that goes into teaching. I hate to just pin, "You either did great on your data or you didn't," because you did great, you know, with so many different things. It's a tough one. But yes, I think some should be celebrated. Honestly, there are teachers who have had some data that has struggled in previous years, that this year really had some great numbers, and we've celebrated that. But we don't have, you know, I guess we don't have a consistent way besides the meetings that I mentioned.
Okay. Because some of these are absolutely fantastic, and I wanted to-
You're right.
-recognize the teachers that have, really showing that they're getting their kids where they need to be.
There are other factors that play in. When we look at some of these classrooms, we knew the teacher was out for several months of the year, and they had a substitute, and then, you know-
Oh, yeah, that's the thing. It's not just about the numbers. It's also, maybe some of them have classes with behavioral issues, and they're doing a great job managing that.
Right. And like I said, on teams, the same teacher takes a look at his or her data and says, "Why is this class so different? Let me weigh." And we have talked about, maybe there are more independent learners in a given class, and maybe we need to balance that better the next year. Again, we're always circling back on how we can do better with placement.
But they do look at this data when they do placement.
Yeah. Are you pleased with these results?
Yes, in general, I am. I, obviously, I'm looking to get to the 80% goal, just like everybody else. And I know some of the teachers who didn't, and I think some of them are the best teachers that we have in the district.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't wanna, you know, the 8th grade, I don't think this number is reflective of the quality of-
Because like I said, I did, I even told them we were gonna take a look at their, you know, data and weigh it against where they were placed in high school, which we could do. But why would I throw out their high school placement based on a June test that, you know, and they know that. They'll articulate to the teachers.
This is just one metric, so I'm not, this is one metric, but, yeah, I'm not-
We're gonna keep trying and keep creating a testing environment and taking it seriously.
That could be part of the discussion before you take this test. This could also determine where you get placed.
And we would have to actually make those moves to have them know, you know. And then sending the data home to families, I hope helps, because certainly, we hear from families who are a little taken aback by where they thought their child was and find that they're not, you know, on this test. So some families have asked if they could take it at home. That's a no. But we do reset, we reset many of the tests, and that's a fine line, too. How many times are you gonna make a kid redo it? Sometimes, if you reset it, now they're, you know, not doing as well for whatever.
What is "reset the test"?
Have them retake it.
Oh, just take it again?
If you get a rush flag, typically, that's the recommended scenario where you would reset a test. But there are times, I did offer to the teachers, "If you feel a student is far off of where they should be, you can decide to have us reset it." And if the student says, "I really wanna try that again," we usually let them.
Do they often say that?
There are a number of resets. No, the students don't often say that. But they, but some do.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful, like, literally, a kid's flagged. Let's set up an appointment with your guidance counselor now. Let's talk about these results. Maybe you shouldn't take this course. Do you wanna retake the test?
Yeah, if we, I mean, and we can do the side-by-side, like, you were right. We have 20 8th graders that still aren't finished with this test. I put the data together for the math, like, as soon as the majority of kids are done. We can dig in deeper. I wanna dig in deeper on class makeup. I wanna, you know, make sure we're taking certain things into consideration. And we can do a side-by-side on where the placement is for high school, but-
What is the issue with the timing on this thing? Is this just, there aren't enough days in the calendar, or iReady only allows us on a certain day?
Well, we're testing them all through May with MCAS. So you either have to put it in an MCAS week, before an MCAS week. Now you're interrupting instruction for two days straight to do iReady. So we decided to move it after MCAS, because-
When they have test fatigue.
That is a higher-stakes test than this. So we put it after MCAS, and actually, it wasn't after the 8th grade science MCAS. There are only so many days. If you test a kid four days in a week, two MCAS, two iReady, that's even more exhausting. So we paced it out. We had different grade levels, some of them going on different days. And you have the field trips coming in. You have, you know, you have all kinds of interruptions at the end of the year. We also, we don't wanna test them too early in May, because now you're giving up a month of instruction. So we- So we, we're open to suggestions.
Eighth grade are the only ones in the middle school that are taking the MCAS, right?
No, they all take ELA.
It's just that the eighth grade takes more tests.
More, okay.
Sixth and seventh have two days of ELA, two days of math, then two days of iReady, two days, and the eighth grade on top of that, two more days of science, two days of civics. So, and then they went to DC in the middle of it all.
Next year, if eighth grade has results that are, um, not aligned with how we think they're doing, I think maybe we should talk about maybe stopping eighth grade, just because that's a lot of testing.
Yeah, we can actually make some adjustments for next year, I think, because we didn't, we talked about it after last year, especially after we saw the MCAS results, and it was not aligned, and we said, there are other factors at play here, but because we had the goal, and it was a two-year goal, if, if I didn't do this assessment, I wouldn't be able to give you data on, on that.
Do we get useful data from the eighth grade by doing this end-of-year testing with the iReady?
The end of the year isn't as useful, because they're now going into high school. The end of the year isn't. During the year, they should be using it to, to adjust groups if they have them and such, but we can, we can circle back. I, I will say, I know how writing-heavy the middle school curriculum is, in particular, Amplify as a curriculum, has students doing a ton of writing, and that's not showing at all here.
Right.
So I, I certainly take that into consideration.
Yep.
No, the younger grades, too, the younger grades aren't showing their writing, third, fourth, fifth, they all, starting in kindergarten, and first, they're doing writing, and that's not in the
Do you have the average, if you average out everyone's score, what we're at for?
For the grade levels, I do, that's on the
Oh, I meant everybody, K three.
Oh, the whole district? I do have that on iReady, I can pull that up, I'll, I can send it to
Okay, I'm just
Yeah, that would be a great overall highlight number, right?
I realized I can't
You know what, I don't have the districts, I have each school, but I can put the three schools together and do
I'm just curious, what?
The thing is, I think we took a look at it, and it doesn't, it doesn't visually show what this actual numeric breakdown shows you. It, it's very subtle, it's not like a, wow, that's a whole different pyramid. But the, but the actual number breakdown is where the real story is.
Thank you, this is a lot of data. Um, it's hard, th- this is a lot of data, so thank you for putting this
One last thing, another reason that these benchmarks are helpful is to set the kids on that personalized learning path. So we're using that iReady path, you, you get reset every time you take a diagnostic, and that's
Useful. And thank you for color coding it. I really appreciate the color coding and the percent change color coding.
I like color coding.
That made it much easier to read.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amber.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at public comment. Does anyone have any public comments this evening?
I would just like to thank the administrators for being here for the entire evening, from the retiree reception all the way to the finish line, it's been a long
A long night after a long day.
Yep, so thank you all very much for, for hanging in the whole meeting, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and I would like to, as a public comment, thank Mrs. Lorenson for
Yes.
putting out refreshments.
Made for a very nice mid-meeting snack for me.
It was delightful.
That's great.
So we thank her very much. Okay, so, on to committee reports, what do we have? Mr. Layton?
Yes, I have, uh, finance committee met on May twenty-third. Uh, they mentioned that there was no special town meeting needed for the override. Um, they were also looking for support on research and recommendations on collaboration of the town and school, specifically with facilities, uh, similar to what Mr. Beardmore talked about earlier today, um, that they were looking for willingness to research and look for recommendations on how we can collaborate, uh, for, in the future. Um, they mentioned about healthcare, uh, the town manager specifically mentioned about healthcare, that the process to change healthcare, uh, 'cause there was talk about like a HSA option, like a health savings account or high deductible option. Uh, basically, how the process works is there's a rep from each of the unions, um, that'll form a committee, and they vote on those changes.
Are they looking to do that?
Um, I think the town manager kinda emphasized that it was gonna be a difficult process.
Oh, okay.
But that's how the process would work.
Okay.
Um, some of the committee members, uh, struggled with the idea that the schools was using Excel for budgeting. Um, again, it was without a finance director, but they didn't really talk about that.
That's what the town manager uses, too. That's what she asked me to send it in, so
Yeah, that was the, the finance committee's concerns.
There's a perception, I think, that, and I, I think it's true, because I work for a Fortune 500 company, and believe it or not, we do our budgeting at, at a department level in Excel, but once it gets like a level above my team, it does go, it goes into a system that I would say is similar to Munis in terms of, you know, it, you effectively see it through the same system that it ultimately operates in, and you can see changes over time and trend and all that sort of thing, whereas it's, as we learned this year, it's really easy to get lost in Excel. And if there's software to, to be found that can make it such that everybody has access to the numbers, they're clear, they can manipulate those numbers for an out, for analytics and that sort of thing, like, why wouldn't we? But there has to be a good solution, and I don't, I'm not sure that anybody's presented it.
And for us, too, um, we build in, it's not in any of the sheets that you end up seeing publicly, the staff member, what step, what lane, longevity payment, what is the longevity payment, our custodians have different steps in longevity payments, our paras due to, that's why Excel works. We build in what we know matter to the salary projections for the different types of employees that we have. I don't know of a software that could manage all of that, it, maybe there is one that exists, but it sounds to me much more like we would be looking for someone to write us, a specialized software that we
Mr. Cassidy wasn't using any software, he was using Excel, yeah.
Yes, I did exactly what Mr. Cassidy used to do.
When, when it's brought up.
Also, Excel is free. The money for, the, the money for a specialized budgeting.
Again, I think this is, you know, kinda similar to the, how do we work together on facilities and those, like, I think a conversation is in order, and if somebody has a good suggestion, or the town wants to take a lead, or this is something Ezekiel wants to work on, like, we should be willing to do so. There, in large businesses, there's something called ERP, E, E, Enterprise Rateness, uh, productivity software that does do all this stuff, but it's big honking software that, you know, is expensive and a little bit bulky to use. I, I just don't know if such a thing translates into the municipal world. Maybe, now that we're upgraded into a modern version of Munis, maybe there's a way to do it in Munis, I, I just don't know.
No, there is
Not currently, certainly, but, but I think that's, you know, ultimately, that's something that we should be
Open to the conversation.
Open to a conversation.
Also interested to see what our new finance director
Yeah, exactly, right, we have new leaders coming in.
And I, I would honestly be shocked if, um, and, and let's remember, she has not been a finance director before.
Yeah, but she
But she's had finance directors, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the notion that most people are, are working off of Excel as they're building their budget.
Just curious, you know, what her experiences are at other schools, too.
Yeah, I was more relaying what their concerns were.
Yeah, we're not already, no.
They also mentioned, uh, there was a discussion about Chapter Seventy, and how after the numbers change, if there's jumps, uh, that were unexpected, where does that money go? Should it go to the general fund? Should it go to the schools? And they weren't solid on where, where that should go. Not all numbers were
I have an opinion on that.
Agreeable, yeah. Uh, their term limits were messed, messed up right now, they're on a three-three-one cycle, so we're gonna see if they can try to fix that, but it got off cycle in the years. The, they were frustrated with the minutes process, and they, they found that it's very dated, the way we do minutes in general for all committees. Um, and then they were interested in long-term forecasting with the schools, and that was all I had.
Okay. Anybody else?
The long-term forecast is, we don't know what's coming.
Yeah.
Well
Unfunded mandates, new student populations moving into town, we can't, I can't do a long-range forecast.
Oh, you can't, but maybe they can do a funding
The, the charter does have a requirement for a five-year fiscal forecast to be presented by the town manager every year, and that's obviously been somewhat of a controversial thing in years past, but I think there is a, there, if it's handled appropriately and well-thought-through and collaborative, it could be a really good tool. This year, it didn't even surface, there was no five-year forecast this year. Um, we did not
What timing year does that usually
It usually comes right before the budget, in January.
Yeah.
And it didn't happen this year. Um, I don't know why, but it didn't happen. So, you know, again, I, I think that we should absolutely participate and, and, and look to them for leadership in that, in that area.
Okay. You all set? Do you have any committees?
No, none.
Any committees, Peter?
Yeah, so, um, just wanna make people aware, um, as I've reported all through the fall, the capital planning committee, when we reorganized back in like October, did so with the intent of continuing our meetings throughout the winter to do a five-year-plus capital plan, or forecast, or something along those lines, as prescribed, by the way, by the charter, um, which, in my, in recent memory, the capital planning committee has never done, we've operated on a year-to-year prioritization, you guys know what we've done. Um, there was an agreement to do that, and then a meeting was never called. Um, and the, the reasoning that was given is because we were all knee-deep in budget, which I understand, but nevertheless, we never followed through with that. Um, Mr. Alonso, the, the chair of the capital planning committee, has been attempting to organize a, a meeting. Um, he announced last night his intent to have a meeting next Monday, but as of yet, I have not been informed that there's a meeting, nor have I seen an agenda, but, um, hopefully, one will occur in the next several weeks. Um, the high school advisory committee met several weeks ago, and I don't have my work calendar, uh, with me right now, so I don't know the exact date. One of the topics that came up, and, and I've asked for further clarification from, um, the vice principal at the, at the high school, is a potential new program involving, um, work credit for some students. So, um, this is a, a new state program that can potentially target at-risk students and organize some sort of school credit around a program relating to their part-time jobs or jobs outside of school. Um, and, and I, I think it's an interesting thing to explore, I certainly have some, also some reservations and, um, curiosity about it, and so, um, that is something that the, the administration of the high school is, is looking at, and I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll get some kind of readout.
I might be able to give you a little bit of context on that, too. Um, it was two years ago, um, uh, Mr. Jeffries, Senator Cronin, and
Recording in progress.
From the, um, Chamber of Commerce invited me to come to a meeting with them, and they talked about the innovation pathway, and how there was money to, you know, basically, if we wanted to build some sort of, uh, wood shop at the school, there was money for that. But there's no money to sustain that afterwards. You get your bill, and then materials, teacher, and all that, that you'd be taking that on. Um, but there was another element of that, uh, through the Chamber of Commerce, that there are businesses, um, that have a hard time getting, you know, uh, employees that are trained, ready to come into their workplace, right? Um, and that there were opportunities for some businesses in the area that they would take a student in for an apprenticeship or an internship, an extended internship, which doesn't fit the model that we have with the STEP program, where, oh, here's my block where I have STEP, today I get to go at one o'clock.
Right.
Oh, tomorrow, it's at eleven o'clock is when I have my STEP class. That's, that's not what they're talking about. They're talking about, like, coming in for a, a, an extended period of time and learning, being trained, thinking that they could be prepared to be hired into a full-time job at graduation with benefits, uh, ready to go. So I had asked them two years ago to start exploring what, how we could create a pathway, how would we identify kids that would be a good fit for that opportunity, and how do we structure their core academics to get their, their graduation requirements, and how would their graduation requirements be adjusted so that this work experience could count towards, um, their graduation? So I think, I think that's
Yeah, and clearly, we're early days in trying to figure this out, and they'd asked for some feedback from the advisory committee, and we all kinda shared some, some thoughts and ideas and, and reservations around it, but I, I think it's worth exploring, so.
Yeah, I know that Air Shirley does it, they have, uh, STEM internships, so it's not even just like regular jobs, you're even doing science, technology, engineering-type jobs.
Yep, and like I said, there were, the chamber knew of specific companies that were, like, looking to be able to, to do this partnership, where it benefits them, but it, it's also a benefit to our kids if they can
Sure.
go get trained, if they didn't have other plans, right? Uh, because if they're not at the, at Monty Tech, and they're not learning a, a, a trade area to go into after high school graduation, and they're not going off to college, and they're not going to the military, like, there's a niche pocket of, of kids that this would be a great opportunity for. We just need to figure out exactly what companies, what does that job look like? Are there kids in our school system that would be interested in one of those jobs? And how do we facilitate that opportunity happening for them? Uh, it's complicated, and it's, and it's gonna take a lot of thought around how to make it work. But it's been a work in progress.
Yeah. So, and then the, the only other, uh, report that I have is athletic advisory committee has not met, um, and, uh, truth be told, my schedule has been such that it's been impossible to schedule, um, but I've also gotten some feedback from, uh, at least a couple of booster club presidents that maybe we need to take a, another look at that policy around, um, sports clubs fundraising and the, the athletic advisory program as we've set up in our policy. Truth be told, there are already, as of today, a couple of booster clubs that are running, that have just kicked off, you know, spring, summer fundraising programs for fall sports, and they're running them in a different nature than they previously run. You know, we're not selling, you know, baked goods in school anymore, or, or raffle tickets as much, now we're doing these, you know, tech-based and web-based, you know, appeals for funding and those kinds of things. And I, I think we need to maybe take a, another look at that, so I'm gonna, um, likely try to get some time with the athletic director in the coming weeks and survey some booster club presidents, and we'll certainly, if I'm reappointed to that position, which I'd like to be, um, you know, have a meeting at the end of the summer in advance of the fall sports season, so that at least we have a handle on whatever's happening in the schools with respect to fundraising. Um, but we're, we're just not getting, um, the level of participation and compliance that I think we set out to get with respect to that program, and I, we don't want to, we wanna, I, you know, my view is, we wanna do everything we can to encourage parents to participate in booster clubs, we don't, we don't want to disincentivize them, so I think we gotta get our heads around that a little bit, and, and my hope is to put a little bit of time into that this summer.
I would definitely point you in the direction of the school policy, too, in regards to some of the fundraising
Well, that's exactly what I'm referring to, is I, I think that there's a policy thing that we need to look at there.
Okay, um, I just have master planning, um, I was unable to attend their gala, um, their public meeting at Smokes Tech Roasters last Thursday night, as I was presenting senior awards, um, so I don't know what occurred there, and they are meeting this, um, Thursday night, tomorrow night. So I can tell you when they met and when they're meeting, but I don't know a whole lot else.
Yeah, it was on YouTube, I saw some of it.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't
Posted.
I didn't look at that, so, there you go, you were a step ahead of me, as always, Mr. Layton. Okay, so, um, topics for future discussion, our meeting next Wednesday is for the purpose next Wednesday is for the purpose of superintendent's evaluation and reorganization. And then we meet again on the 26th. So I think we have a fair amount of stuff for the 26th.
I will not be there on the 26th.
You will not.
I will be remote.
As will I.
Well, gee whiz, you guys. I will be there.
You could be there by yourself.
I could be there all by myself. I don't know if that works, but.
Can we do it as just a Zoom meeting? Do we have to have?
Oh, we could do it as a remote meeting if all of you guys are going to be missing.
On the 26th?
On the 26th. Well, we're going to have a head specialist, a trauma doctor.
But they could do that remote.
They could do it remote. They could do it remote, she says.
Looking forward to that one.
So we can do that. It would make sense then to have two, you know, maybe Tony and I and everybody else.
I just, I mean, whatever, whatever.
That'll be an important meeting because that's when we will let you know what the open POs are.
Oh, it's a very important meeting, yeah.
Yeah, we can't, we can't cancel that meeting. No, that we have to do, no question.
I could be in person if absolutely necessary. I just don't.
I don't think it's absolutely necessary.
No, we could do it as a remote meeting.
Sounds great.
We'll figure it out. Okay, so we are down to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
Make a motion to go into executive session at 9:44 PM and adjourn after.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So much for a quick meeting.
Well.
I didn't think it would be quick. It's still quicker than I thought it would be.